Good evening. I would like to welcome everyone that is with us in council chambers. I think this is the most folks we've had in this room in a long time. So it's very nice to see all of your faces as well as those of us joining us online this evening. First up, we have our agenda adoption. Is there a motion on the floor to adopt the agenda as presented this evening? There's a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. The motion is carried. At this time, I would like to have Councilman Bevman lead our invitation for us this evening.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for this day where we thank you that we can, we can join together in freedom and, and come together and meet as a community. Lord, we just thank you for the blessings that you continually pour out on this community. We're just asked you give us direction this evening. Would grace us with your wisdom and your presence here. God, we just again, thank you for allowing us to be in a wonderful neighborhood. And just ask you continued hand to be on it. And we just praise you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. But everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
What we used to do for a little while.
They look help him. Yeah.
I didn't even notice.
Can we get a real picture?
It's popping up. Thank you, Waden. Appreciate that. Well, that's a first.
Yep.
We do have a special presentation this evening. If you were in attendance at the July 4th festivities and parade, you might have seen a very special softball team present. Tonight, we would like to welcome many of the players and coaches of Harrisburg's Hickory Ridge High School 2023 softball team to our town council meeting this evening. And we would like to formally recognize their accomplishments tonight. The softball team had a very exciting and successful season this year, coached by head coach Justin Davies and assistant coaches La Russa, Nicholson, and Johnacy. The team went undefeated in their regular season and were ranked number one in the Greater Metro 4A softball standings. The team went on to the North Carolina 4A softball state championship, where they were runners runners up in a very close best of three game series. And although their winning season was a tremendous team effort, I'd like to also congratulate Anna Do, Grace Bechtel, and Tori Kirkpatrick, who were selected as All-State Players. Grace Bechtel was selected as the Region Six Player of the Year, while Anna Do was selected as both Region Six and 4A Western Conference State Pitcher of the Year. So if we could please have the coaches and players with us this evening to come up on stage. We have a few things to present.
So on behalf of the town chair of our council, we'd like to present you with this certificate as well as this plaque. Thank you so much. Congratulations ladies. I'm proud of you all.
In addition to the certificate and the plaque, which they can take back to school, one of the things we're working, we're going to work with the young ladies and coaching staff over the next couple, three weeks is to develop a permanent outfield fence sign. It will be calling spark as well as your home field. And we'll put it up there recognizing that as long as you want. Okay? So we'll reach out to you guys, my staff, in a week. We'll design it.
We did have another special presentation scheduled for this evening to recognize Ish Smith. But unfortunately, he was not able to be here this evening, so we are going to reschedule that. So we'll make sure to publish that as soon as we're able to do so. At this time, if there's anyone wishing to address counsel for public comments, they may do so. I will call for you to please state your name and address for the record. Please be courteous and do not repeat what has already been said. And please keep your comments on the subject matter. I did not have anyone that signed up on the sheet that was outside. But if there is anyone in council chambers that would like to speak during public comments, please raise your hand and we'll call you to the podium. Brett Crosby.
My name is Brett Crosby. I live at 224 Ridge Drive. Just wanted to say quickly, thank you to the council, all the staff for an amazing July 3rd and 4th event. As a member of the Parks and Rec Commission, I saw the hard work they put into that. So kudos for a great job. And also thank you to all of you guys, Public Works, Parks and Recreation, for allowing the YMCA to help kick off our public capital campaign to build a new YMCA. So hopefully you've all seen our videos, some of the billboards around the town. And we need everyone's support so we can get this YMCA to the finish line in the town of Harrisburg. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Brett. Is there anyone else in council chambers that would like to speak during public comments this evening? If not, we will move to our online listeners. Is there anyone online? You can just raise your hand in the chat feature and we will call on you. Okay, there is no one online. Great. Next, we will move on to our communications portion. And first up, we have Rob Donham, our town manager, to issue his monthly report. Consent agenda. Let's do that first before you give you your part. Rich is like, yes, please. That would be great.
Can we tell it summer?
Is there?
We're off to a pack.
That's it. It's the whole flag thing. It totally threw me off this evening. Is there a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda as presented tonight? Is there a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. The motion is carried. Well, we may get to our communications updates.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, everybody in attendance. I appreciate everybody being here this evening. I'm going to keep my presentation relatively short on the front end of the agenda. We do have several items on here, which I think, you know, we'll have other updates. Primarily, I wanted to recognize our staff and everybody that participated in our third and fourth event. One of the numbers that we haven't tracked in previous years was what does it take to put on an event like that from a staff manpower standpoint? But we did track it this year. And just for reference, we had eighty-eight full-time staff members there. So that that included more than forty deputies in order to keep the peace as we ushered in, you know, almost forty thousand people through those two days. But eighty-eight staff members and seventy-five volunteers for a total of nearly two thousand two hundred man-hours or people hours. Most of them were not men. So we had lots of females running the show out there this year. And it was a really, really good event. So we had a lot of people in. Everything went really smooth. No injuries. We only had a few missing parents, no missing children. The children find our police officers and let us know that their parents are missing. And then we return them to their parents. And that's a true statement. That's a, the kids know they're missing before the parents do. So another wonderful event. This is something that we're really proud to be able to pull off, and it went off seamlessly again. So I want to thank obviously Jim Spina, Parks and Rec Director, and his staff for coordinating it. And then all of our other staff members, Public Works helped out quite a bit this year, brought them in for additional help. And I know that relieved a lot of our maintenance staff in parks. We're able to keep up, keep the place clean and with minimal effort, be able to clean that park up and have it turned around the next day to be open to the public. So great job, staff. Thank you, council, for supporting that. The other item I wanted to mention was our growth factors. And we've talked about kind of, you know, where we're headed as a town, how many homes we have coming online. That that really dictates a lot of the decisions that we make here annually on our budgets, everything from staffing to revenue projections and so forth. And we, we have been watching closely, you know, what would happen as the Fed raised interest rates? What effect would that have on housing starts? And interestingly enough, it's had the exact opposite effect in Harrisburg that it's had in most of the country. So our last fiscal year just wrapped up. And I believe the final number is just over three hundred, maybe three hundred and fifteen starts, new house starts in the community last year, which would be the largest number since I've been here in seven years. So, you know, we're looking at maybe, you know, this year, outpacing that and having almost four hundred new homes come online. These are backlogged, pre-approved homes from, you know, previous years of just kind of these lots being waited to be planted so that we could have these new starts. But probably, you know, over that two-year period, we're looking at almost seven, eight hundred new homes coming online. That's our, our household size factors are right around three and a quarter, three and a half on average across those houses. So, you know, when we look at, say, eight hundred homes, we're looking at north of twenty-five hundred people just in the last two years that we have to bring online, provide services, pick up their trash, provide water, pick up leaves and grass clippings, police protection, fire protection. So these are all things that, you know, we keep an eye on. It also comes with, you know, revenue associated with that. But I thought that would be, you know, an interesting number to bring up tonight and to share with the community as well. So everything else on, on my list, I'll go ahead and defer to the rest of the agenda. But I will take any questions from council if there are any items that the community was looking for updates on.
Thank you, Rob. Next up, we will have our finance report. Brian Lee.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Right. This is our finance report as of the end of fiscal year 2023, or June 30th. We'll jump right into operations. Here we go. So the top section here is a look at our revenues for the fiscal year. You can see that the general fund ended the year at a hundred and six percent of budget at just over $23 million. And tax collections played a big role in that at almost thirteen and a half million, coming in at a hundred and one percent of budget. Some of the items that make up that extra 1.2, 1.3 million that you see there, which we'll dive into a much greater detail when we do the audit presentation and see these numbers in much more detail. But some of the, the quick categories of revenue there are about a hundred and fifty thousand in property tax, about five hundred thousand in state shared revenues, which is sales taxes and other utility taxes, about a hundred thousand from permits and plan review fees, both through planning and engineering. And then the one I'm most proud of, of course, is interest income at about a quarter million more than our budget this year. So really good results there on our general fund revenues. Water and Sewer Fund ended at about ninety-eight percent, but we do still need to pick up twenty days from the July bill that will, that should carry that over a hundred percent. And that same adjustment will be made for the Stormwater Fund, which already sits at a hundred and two percent. So really, really strong year in our revenue collection. For expenditures, general government departments, you can see that all the departments there, other than council, range from, you know, high fifties up into about ninety percent. So really good performance there and no concerns about going over budget for any of the departments as we closed out the year. The rest of the general fund departments are here, all in that same range from high fifties up to ninety-two for Parks and Rec. And then you see Water and Sewer at eighty-seven percent and Stormwater Fund at fifty percent. That's very common for Stormwater. We have a lot of funds set aside for potential problems and for partnerships with people in the community. And so those are not often used in the Stormwater Fund. Salaries townwide reached eighty-seven percent for the fiscal year at just over $7 million. This is the last look at our fiscal year 2023 projects. There will be several that we carry over and continue to report on. But this is the last look at the entirety of our projects this year. So first want to mention the ADA sidewalk project. Curb ramps will be installed in Kensington Forests over the summer, and that will complete the project. And then we'll move right on to fiscal year 24's set of ADA projects. The Stormwater Spot improvements on Oakley and Willow are at about seventy-five percent. That's progressing on schedule, and that should be finished up by the end of the month. Station number one upgrades were moved to complete about in the middle of the screen there. All projects were finished out in June, and so that is now in service. And Lucas Court, we saw some pictures of that last month as it was getting finished up, but it is officially finished up and then was just accepted on the consent agenda to be a part of the Town's Red system. This is a look at our projects under design or multi-year projects under design. The four transportation bond projects are right there in the ninety, ninety-five percent range. And so you'll start to see some of those construction contracts presented over the next few months. This is a look at our multi-year projects that are under construction. So the stalling sidewalks, phase one, was also on the consent agenda tonight. So you'll start to see that move throughout the rest of this year. The twenty-one, twenty-two water lines should be wrapped up over the next month. We have some minor road patching and touch-ups remaining on that project. And lastly, Station Number Two Training, that is now shown as complete. That training facility has been placed into service. And so that project is finally wrapped up dating back to 2017 for the station and the training facility. This is a look at our equipment projects. All of the projects in yellow will be carried over and reported on next year. Everything's been ordered or somewhere in the process, but just hasn't been finished out. And then we did have one that was moved to complete during the month of June, and that was the training room projector and video conference bar for the fire station. These are our vehicles. No movement or not too much movement on this page. All of the yellow and red, just like with the equipment, will be carried over and combined with our twenty-four vehicle purchases. So we'll have a lot of vehicles in twenty-four that hopefully we can get our hands on. We did move two to complete. That is the ladder truck, which hopefully everyone saw flying the American flag at July 3rd and 4th. And then lastly, the used bucket truck was also, we had to do some upfitting to that and, and some service. And so that has now been placed in service during the month of June. This is a look, if you did not get to see it, of the brand-new fire truck. It's beautiful, in my opinion. But yeah, so we're really happy to have that. Great addition to our assets with the town, and that is now in service and on calls. Professional Services Project, the Parks Master Plan, the RFQs are due back in two days. And I have actually already received some this time, so we're way ahead of where we were last time. The Water Model and CIP are also for Water Sewer. They are on the agenda tonight as well. And so we'll start to see some movement on those as we progress the fiscal year. So nothing to report now, but I just wanted to give you a preview of the twenty-four projects. So we'll, we'll combine these and show you just the projects that remain open or active throughout the year. But this is the full list here. So we have some transportation projects, again, a couple improvements with Parks and Rec. And then Water Sewer has its typical projects, a couple there, including the Water Tower One office upgrades. Only one project will go into design this year, and that is the renovation of Town Hall. So hopefully that coincides with the YMCA moving out to their new location, and we'll be able to move forward on construction right away when the building's open. Equipment projects here, pretty light year compared to previous years, but we are bringing over about eight items from the prior year. So this list will grow again, but a couple items for information technology and a couple for the fire department. These are our new vehicles, so ones that we haven't seen on the list before. So this combined with that list we just saw that was in yellow and red is a lot of vehicles that we'll be purchasing this year. But again, if we can get our hands on them. And a couple professional services projects include a comprehensive strategic plan and a town center overlay for planning and an alternative water source study for water and sewer. And lastly, I wanted to give a quick update on July 4th. I know we'll do a much more in-depth debriefing of that. But happy to say that we gave away thirty-eight hundred and seventy-four free wristbands to Harrisburg tax-paying residents. Those went to nine hundred and seventy-two households. At the event, over the two days, we sold just under thirty-one hundred wristbands. So you can see just how many we gave away in the three-week period here. We also sold nineteen thousand individual tickets, and that amounted to about $78,000 in revenue. If, if we were to have sold the wristbands that were given away to the Harrisburg residents, that was about $105,000. So a lot more activity with wristbands and tickets than we've ever seen before by a long shot. One of the important reports that we submit to the state every year is our Power Bill report. So engineering and finance have worked to get everything ready to submit that to the state ahead of the July 21st deadline. And again, with ARPA, as I'm required to update you every month, a little more interest earned this month takes our remaining balance to appropriate just under $840,000. And with that, I would welcome any questions you may have.
Right, yeah. Excuse me. Station one warning light is on hold. What is the freshman anywhere we don't know?
There were some preliminary design and engineering work done on that. And then the, the quotes that we got or the bids were way, way over the budget. And so we decided to pause on that and see what happens with Station One or bring it back in a future year and request that. But as of right now, that one is, is going to, it died off on June 30th.
What's the status on Station Three?
Station Three, I'm not sure that that one is in the, it may be in next year's CIP, if I remember correctly.
Come up for a signal up front?
Yeah.
It's not this year's.
Yeah, it's not in this year's. It may be twenty-five.
Since we're getting one out there already at Stallings and Rocky River, is that an option to load up? And get the other one, get that one done.
There's no economy scale there. It was fifty-seven projects, but you certainly that's where they're interconnected. Yeah, there's no synergy or, you know, because the developers paying for the warm will take the other one.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Brian? Thank you very much. Let's start with our law enforcement update. We have Lieutenant Nash to give us our monthly report today.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
So Captain Measmer wanted me to relay a message to you, Mr. Town Manager, twenty-one thousand.
I, I wasn't going to opine on our Fourth of July numbers, but since he prodded me from sitting in the back, if you notice, our ticket sales outdid last year by a significant margin. Our vendor sales did last year by a significant margin. But somebody was asleep at the counter wheel. So I, I have the number at about thirty-one thousand, but, you know.
Don't shoot the messenger.
Hear that, Lieutenant?
All right. So we'll start with our June activities. We had three thousand five hundred and seventy-six law enforcement-related activities. Of those, two thousand five hundred and seventy-two were security checks, seven hundred and twenty traffic stops, and our non-emergency response time was six minutes and thirty-four seconds. We'd also like to welcome Harrisburg Senior Deputy Susan Burcham. She comes to us with twenty-two years of law enforcement experience. Prior to coming to the Sheriff's Office, she worked at CNPD for seven years as a patrol officer. For the past year, she's been a bailiff in our bailiff courtroom division, and she's realized that her passion is patrol. So we're very happy to have her in Harrisburg with her years of experience. She's in training now. We'll be on her all, probably within a couple of weeks. And then also for the third, there we go. For the third and fourth, we had eight lost children. Two, two of those, the parents were looking for. The other ones, the children actually came up to us and said, hey, I lost my parents. So everybody was reunited. We assisted the fire department with several medical calls, like heat exhaustion was the main one, but they were on top of it with their response times. The fire department did a great job as far as any criminal activity. I have absolutely nothing to report from the third and the fourth or the parade on the fourth. So everything went very well. That's all I have. We have any questions?
Despite being poor counters, I did want to thank Captain Mason or in the Sheriff's Department. You know, they were out really in force, like I said, forty. That has to be a record for how many you guys were able to get out for us. And every single one of them were professional, polite, and excellent at their jobs. There were several times where we took over traffic control or traffic parking in order to get more people into the park, help people around. So they did a phenomenal job, and please pass that along to the deputies. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant Nash. Next up, we'll have Chief Dunn with our fire department update. I think I had you in the right order this time.
Yeah. Invite everybody came out soon.
Big crowd.
Big crowd. All right. So Harrisburg Fire Department's June recap. Y'all are very familiar with this. So B shift had one fire truck tour for Harrisburg Presby and preschool for about sixty kids. C shift had three fire prevention demonstrations at the children's courtyard for about a hundred kids. A shift assisted the Harrisburg Elementary for two days of water field day training. I think we talked about that. They also did that the prior month as well. John Malonico instructed the YMCA counselors in a citizen's response to active shooter events for about twenty staff members. So a lot going on during the month of June. This is a list of our fire marshal statistics. We, we've seen that last month, we started putting that in there. You can see completed annual inspections and re-inspections of about forty-four last month. And then you can go through the other list as well. Our June stats, so we responded to two hundred and four incidents last month. Again, with a total of three hundred and twenty-five responses, which again is each individual truck responding and then correlates to the number of personnel counts for each of those. Unit responses, you can see in the particular year, we're up fourteen hundred and sixteen responses. And our average response time last month was four minutes and four seconds, which is about three seconds faster than the previous one. Any questions on that? So Station One continues to dominate fifty-two, fifty-two percent of the incidents from there. Station Two is at twenty-five, and Station Thirty relative a little bit behind Station Two at twenty-two percent. Incident counts by the particular man vehicles. And you can see Station One or Ladder Thirty-One was the dominant in that particular category as well. Incident types, again, are fire and EMS or rescue continue to dominate, which is typical among most fire departments within the United States. And you can see the other incidents as well. So again, this chart shows either the aid that we gave or were given. You can see about seventy-six percent of the incidents we were able to handle ourselves. And you can see that our automatic aid given and received was fourteen percent. And you can see that our automatic aid given and received was fourteen percent and nine percent respectively. Our incident heat map, you can see June fifteenth seemed to be our busiest day. For this particular month, we can see that particularly on Saturdays in the middle of the week are busy times for responses. We began this map last month, you can see the individual zones and correlates to the percentage of incidents within those particular zones. Was that helpful for y'all last month? And then some of y'all were asking about that.
Station one, the hotspot because of the proximity to forty-nine?
It is. I mean, those zones all up and down forty-nine, especially in between, let's just say, Publix to Caldwell Road. I mean, that's just a hotbed. Racks and medical incidents and things of that nature.
So station two and three wouldn't see that much activity when it comes to this.
No, they're seeing more, you know, as residential growth over there at the beginning to see more, especially station two, as Farmington's coming online. A lot of those townhomes are being occupied at this point. So a couple of slides back, you'll see that percentage go up, I think, over time for station two. And the light, you know, I know you're talking about light a minute ago, the light there definitely makes a difference. That's a busy, a busy area right there where station three has a little bit more ease of access because you have Pembroke, Pembroke Road and Rocky River roads. So some operational updates. Again, I think Brian showed a picture of this. The new ladder has arrived. Initial training took place from the manufacturer. An additional training will will take place as far as driving it and beginning the hours behind the wheel to get certified to be able to do that. So we're getting really, really close. I know y'all have heard that for several months now. We're getting close. Any questions on that?
How many of the incidents were fire? How many fires did you put out in June?
One house fire, one park. So as everybody's aware, the social media seemed to blast up over over the weekend. We had to close a station, if you'll remember, I guess about a week ago, maybe two weeks ago. So I just want to reiterate to you, we would, you know, I'm glad to work with anybody or talk with anybody. I've gotten zero phone calls, zero emails. If anybody wants to come to my office or admin building and talk about this, I'll be glad to. I don't, you know, respond to social media. A lot of those accounts are either fake accounts or it's half information or things like that. So I just don't get into that. But again, you know, if the mayor mentioned a couple of months ago, people want to get from behind the keyboard and and come talk in person. I'm glad to do that and and, you know, explain our our theory as to why we do things that we do. So but I did want to, you know, reiterate to you and hopefully give you some comfort level of what we're trying to do to to do recruiting and retaining. So we're working with Rowan Cabarrus Community College. They run fire classes all the time. So we began working with them on their recruits. They come out and get face time with those recruits and work with the staff at the college to understand, you know, which of those recruits would would fit in an organization like a municipal fire department. Some of them simply go there to do, you know, volunteer work, and that's fine. We're constantly trying to recruit laterals. And what that means is somebody might be on another fire department that's smaller or for whatever reason, and they they want to come to another fire department. So we're always working on with that. Another recruit process will begin with the city of Concord. We've been doing those since two thousand and six. Those have been heavily successful. You know, Concord, Conapolis, Harrisburg, we're all feeling the same pains of shortages. This is not a local issue. It's not a state issue. It's it's a United States issue of every, every, every power department in America. So we're working to try to get those those going. So this particular month, we we have five possible interviews that we're doing and hopefully bring those in-house. If you remember, we also have three individuals that are in recruit school with Concord right now. Their their date to come out is in November. And everybody's aware that we have our new training grounds. So we're working with Rowan Cabarrus Community College on that as well as how can we better utilize those grounds for training folks in a quicker amount of time. Since, you know, we have it on our own municipality, so we're working on that. So those are several things that we're doing. I think, you know, Rob's going to elaborate on some other other things that we're trying to do. But, you know, just so everybody's aware, we do have, you know, currently have eight vacancies. We're probably getting ready to have eleven by the end of the month. Three are leaving for the city of Charlotte. Chief Wooten probably has a statistic better than anybody, but of all the folks, and he keeps a list of everybody that we've hired and everybody that's left. And it's about sixty to seventy percent that go to the city of Charlotte Fire Department that leave. So we've seen that since nineteen ninety-nine when we started hiring full-time firefighters. So some of the other factors that we deal with is parental leave. That's a benefit that we have. Our employees love it. We have people that are on surgery. They have some type of medical leave or they're just simply sick. And of course, we have vacation leave. So all of those are benefits that we have to hopefully, again, attract people to come to the town of Harrisburg part of them. As everybody's aware, so our staffing is, there's fourteen that are assigned to two shifts at this particular time. And there's eleven that are assigned to the third shift, but you have approved to bring that other shift up to fourteen later in this fiscal year. So we'll do that later in the fiscal year. Our concentration right now is to fill the spots that we have. So that's kind of where we are. Again, if any of you want to come talk about that, of course, Rob will be there too, and, you know, we'll discuss it. But we're trying to do the best we can. We're trying to do the best that we can for the employees that we have, trying to keep those, so.
Chief Dunn, are we, the anomaly when it comes to closing a station, is it just Harrisburg's closing a station or others closing stations?
So other other municipalities, what I I will call it a reduction in service. So bigger municipalities might have an engine and a ladder or two engines assigned to a station. They may have, they may be going able to staff one of those particular trucks in that station. So they didn't shut a station down, but they reduced the service. So I don't want to call out particular agencies, but I know that's going on. I I meet with other fire chiefs all the time. We're all having the same issue. There's listservs out there where we're all trying to solve the same issues. While while, you know, our particular one was pointed out, I'm not real sure. So of course, it's not something that we like to do. You know, we're we're trying our best not to do that. But there's a certain point, if you're down so many people, it becomes a safety factor, right?
Right.
There's there's tons of data out there that shows as as we've justified to you and while we justified this year to get the fifth person assigned to the other ship is it's a safety issue. So NFPA has many, many studies and data that'll show you, you know, fire trucks are more safe and efficient with four people. It's three people, it goes down a little bit. It's two people, it becomes, you know, an issue, so.
So how many, and this will be my last question. How many walk-ups do we see or drive-ups? Is that a common occurrence? Is it rare? Is it? And in a situation like that, and I pointed out just because of the interview, and they referenced that there's nobody at the station, therefore that that individual's further delayed. What are we looking at in crisis?
So we run roughly, what, three thousand incidents a year? What most fifty, let's just say fifty percent of those are are medical. So let's say that's fifteen hundred are medical related. Out of fifteen hundred, I would say it's ten or less that actually walk up to a station. I'll I'll get that for sure. I'm just guessing at this point, but I'm sure Chief can pull that up in our, you know, software reporting software.
So when that station is down, it's completely down, lights out, nobody there at all?
Correct, except for station three that has a Cabarrus County paramedic unit in it. So so they're, you know, they're in and out all day too, though. But yeah, if it's closed, it's it's totally closed.
I think an important caveat to that, Councilman Smith and Chief and I talked through this, and I I promise you I would save some breath for my manager's report for this issue, so bear with me. But in a situation like that, you know, that's not unique. You know, I had to go out this week and debunk some false media reports and do interviews and and give data on this. But let's say, you know, you'll walk up to a station, let's be practical about this for a minute, right? We keep one company at a station, as does almost every fire department in America. And on those fifteen hundred medical calls, when they go out on a call, they're not at the station. If you walk up to a station while they're on call, they're not going to be there. If you walk up to the station when they're at training, like they were this morning, station three was at station one doing some training, they're not going to be at the station. If they go to Aldi and get the groceries, they're not going to be at the station. Anytime they're doing anything except for waiting at the station, they're not going to be at the station. So that's not unique. And, you know, again, I heard the special interest groups make an issue out of that over the weekend. But, you know, we rely on the fire chief and his assistant chiefs to make fire-related calls. We don't, people that, you know, aren't here, that aren't hopping on a truck every day, that aren't responsible for providing the public safety to our residents. They don't matter to me. What matters to me is what the chief recommends. And if they say, hey, we're we're better on this particular day due to the staffing levels to overstaff at these two stations and just leave Cabarrus CMS at a third station, well, that's his call. And, you know, we we've got to honor that, although, you know, he can be second-guessed, I can be second-guessed on on situations like that. You know, it's not, it's not like when we have somebody, and in the day we had closed, it was, you know, again, a last-minute call in where somebody was sick or injured. You know, he's got to make split-second decisions on on how we're going to staff. And it, you know, that's just one more incident, one more time where we're not at that station. But, you know, we leave those, leave those decisions to the to the people that actually are providing the service and not the special interest groups that run to the media with inaccurate reports.
So I just a question here. So how long have you been a firefighter, Chief Dunn?
Long time.
Long time, right?
Nineteen eighty-eight.
And how long have you been chief?
A long time.
A long time. So we trust you because you know what's going on. You made a decision to close the station, and maybe you can explain to everybody why that is. But you're in your position because you were entrusted by someone that hired you to do that. And you've made that decision to staff this town the way it should be staffed. I asked the question earlier, how many fires did we have last month? One car, one house. So you know what's going on and you know where it's going on. So I trust you in that. So let me throw out a hypothetical question here. So we hear out there that got to have more firefighters because they're all leaving because they don't get paid. So let's just say we get up to that magical number of where we have all those firefighters. And the flu goes around and it knocks you down. How do you handle that? You handle it the same way you're kind of handling it now, right?
Well, I would say it's similar to COVID as well. We had, you know, several out during that that particular time as well, so it's very similar to that, I would think.
Right. And and we have a an agreement with Charlotte. We have an agreement with Concord that you help them and they help you. So when 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 a station's down, you're right across the line and you got in Charlotte station. So in your opinion, anytime over the last thirty days, has this town been in jeopardy of not being able to handle the situation?
No.
Could you say that one more time for the West Coast, please?
No.
Thank you.
So, but just let me reiterate what you're what you're saying. Because I'm saying no is because of the relationship and the agreements that we have with the city of Concord and the city of Charlotte. They are automatic aid agreements. It's not, you make a phone call and it has to go through three different chief levels of can they go over there and help? It's not like that. It is an automatic response. So their communication centers, our communication centers know those are in place. Computers tell them they're in place, and it's all automatic response.
Now.
Station eight and the city of Concord today was running a medical in Bracker Park in the town of Harrisburg. I think you'll find that most people, most people, not everybody, but most people don't care what truck shows up in front of their house as long as it shows up to help. And that's pretty much what we've seen so far. If you remember early on, we spoke with you, hey, this is what we want to do in the city of Concord. We even want to go under their communication center because we knew that would bolster even further the responses that need to be made if we were busy or or they're busy. And it's it's worked out great.
Can I, you know, you mentioned debunk, could I debunk for a moment? Have you ever been underfunded for months? I mean, I don't exactly understand what that would would look like if we did underfund it. But is there ever a situation that we have underfunded you guys?
I don't think so. I mean, I think, have I've gotten everything that I've asked for? No, but no, no department in the town of Harrisburg has gotten everything they've asked. I mean, I, you know, and I'm not putting him on the spot, but I think prior fire team is sitting back there. I think he would be amazed at where we are today versus where we were then during his tenure. So it's a growing community. It's a growing fire department. We're up to three stations and, you know, we're getting ready to have the five assigned and and all of that good stuff. So have we gotten everything, fortunately, but I don't, I wouldn't categorize the Harrisburg Fire Department as being un- underfunded by the town council.
And along that lines, I want to make sure, and I think two years ago during a budget meeting, we were talking about apparatuses and we were talking about people. And I believe I asked you a question during one of those times, which would you rather have, the people or the apparatus? And at that time, I believe you answered the equipment. Do you remember?
I don't.
Okay. If I were to ask you that question now, would you prefer to have people or would you prefer to have equipment?
Well, I would say at this point it's people, just because of the situation that we're in. If you're asking for additional people, I mean, I I think, and you've heard me say in in budget meetings, when we, when we do this final, you know, the third one or fifth assigned to station three, I think we're, you know, I know we're going to be okay. So either we put another company in service or, you know, you build station four somewhere out where it is at Lower Rock River Road. That'll probably be after my tenure.
So last month, you mentioned it, and I asked you several questions. To my knowledge, stepping grade has not been presented to council this time. I knew you guys were working on it, but we had never seen a formal presentation. We've not declined it or punted on it or anything like it, to my knowledge. I think we understood it last month was you were going to bring stepping grade to us, but we have not seen it to this point, correct?
Yeah, as far as I know, you have not seen it. This has simply been a conversation between me and my boss, the town manager. Whenever he decides to move that forward is, that's his call.
We we have one shot per year to change things like salaries, pay grades, step and grade, amounts of funding. And, you know, I'll, again, you know, tag on a little bit on the funding issue, you know, underfunded versus overfunded. That's a complicated question, right? There's a lot of subjectivity to to that answer. So, you know, what what do we do from a staff standpoint to try to gauge that? We benchmark, you know, and we we look and and see, okay, immediately, what do what do you need? And I think, you know, like you had mentioned, when you asked two years ago, do you guys need equipment or people? And I think, you know, like you'd mentioned, when you asked two years ago, do you guys need equipment or people? Well, we had people. We needed equipment. Now we have really, we've got our equipment. Ladder truck just rolled in. We, we don't need another ladder truck. Now we need people. And, and it's always this game of, of whack a mole when you have, um, limited resources, right? I mean, we, we can't just sell more product and get more money. We don't charge per fire or per car crash. Um, we're limited by the tax base and we're limited by that rate and that valuation. It's still from four years ago, right? We're, we're working ten years in the past inflation wise. Look at what inflation has done to our resources and, and how it eroded, um, our purchasing power over the past four years and, and you know, we're behind that eight ball. But when we look at, you know, where, where are we funded? I, I can say, um, everything that the chief and I have brought in the two budgets that I've been here, um, they've all been accepted. We've never had anything in, in my tenure. Now, chief's tenure is a much longer, so he may have had a, a thing or two in there, but certainly since I've been here, um, anything we've requested, uh, has been approved. And, you know, from that benchmarking standpoint, when we look at what are the resources that we need? We look at our peer groups. So when you look at our tax base and you say, how much are we spending of our property taxes on this particular service and how does it compare to your peers? And when we look at ours, we, we fund fire pretty well. We've forty-eight percent of every tax dollar that we bring in, every property tax dollar that we bring in goes to that core service. So forty-eight percent goes to fire. If you were to look at the city of Charlotte, that number's nineteen percent. You look at the city of Kannapolis, that number's thirty percent. If you look at Concord, that number's forty-five percent. Concord's a little closer to what we spend, but we're still dedicating more resource, more resources per resident to fire than any of our, our peer groups. Is that enough? Again, that's a subjective question, right? That, then, then that gets into, is your tax base enough or are your, your values enough? But I, I can't say we're doing the best we can. Um, you know, there's a, there, we are limited by the amount of money that we have. But we have really nice facilities. We have top low line equipment. We have a safe work environment. We have, you know, this great training facility that we funded and built last year. Um, as of last September, we, we were behind the market on pay, at least for, um, not only for fire, but for all of our employees. And we made a historic investment in our employees last September. And we continue to make that this year by adding some significant benefits. Uh, we haven't had the opportunity to market these new pay benefits, which I think everybody will be surprised when, you know, they see these salaries and benefits as we put them out over the next month to try to recruit to backfill some of these positions. So, you know, Harrisburg's a fantastic place to work. I've been here seven years and the community has always supported its public servants. But there is a crisis going on in public service and it affects public safety, police and fire more than, than others, but state of North Carolina has thirty percent of the workforce not filled in all state positions. You know, you had mentioned, you know, Baltimore having issues with their stations. You know, Charlotte's had issues the last few years with their police and with their fire, their fires looking at significant pay increases in this year's budget in order to ma- maintain it. And, you know, so, some of this is, you know, how do we compensate our employees and how do we attract them? Some of it's also how do we treat them? You know, public servants aren't, aren't, uh, excited about seeing their names in the papers, their salaries in the paper, having every decision that they make, uh, second guessed. Um, you know, you think the chief wanted to shut a station down? It was, it was, you know, the lesser of two evils. He's making, um, critical triage decisions real time. And after the fact, people not in this business are going to criticize it in the paper. So, you know, there is a, there's a crisis. It's not in Harrisburg. It's, it's throughout the country. Uh, we're not attracting young people into public service like we used to. Pensions are not as valuable to people that don't plan on spending thirty years in, in the same career anymore. So salary i- is more important, but so is dignity. And I, I think we have to treat our public employees with more dignity and, and have more of these open conversations and um, not hide, you know, on social media and, uh, throw out judgment and innuendo. Those are things that make it tough for the chief and I to get people to come into this. And if we, if we want to rebuild our public service and attract more people into this, um, we do have to pay them better, but we also have to treat them better.
Our fire department is unique and, and unique in various ways. There's a lot of uniqueness about you guys that I love, but what are the things that we are unique in that I think, and you can correct me here, we also serve county, correct? When we, you know, when you go on a call, it could be Harrisburg proper, but it could be county. Which county limits the money that we're allowed to collect of fifteen cents? Do we have an idea of how much the town is having to make up of that difference? To, I mean, because when you think of it, and is there an effort to get the county to move? I keep hearing it. Year after year, the county's going to move up, but then something stops it. And I don't know if it's a state regulation or how does that, how does that work?
I mean, it's a, I'm not, I'm not sure how the county tax rate work. I'd have to get back to you on that. But the, the cost allocation and the cost tracking on that, that it's an exercise in futility because the, the cost per call isn't the same across the board, right? You, you may have a, you know, a very simple call in the county that, that, um, the cost of that call might not be significant, or it may be, you know, a five alarm fire, right? And we have mutual aid and everybody else coming in and, um, you know, it's just the cost allocation is, is very difficult, but from a very basic standpoint, when you look at, if what we pay here for fire service versus what, um, it's capped out in the, um, county regions that we serve, it's about half. Our residents pay, uh, about twice the tax rate as the county for fire service.
Last thing that I have, and I promise this is absolute last for me. Um, so several years ago, I became aware of Carris Professional Firefighters Association. And I did not realize and separate those guys from you. I saw those guys as the wolves. Being in this role, I've realized it's quite the opposite. You're your own man, you're your own station, you're your own company. And these guys are, as what you said, Rob, a third party interest, I guess is what you called them, special, special interest. More information tells me that there are a union, but we don't recognize unions in the state of North Carolina. How does that work? That our guys participate in this, I mean, because it seems like it's a conflict in some ways. If, like, and this is, the union is saying, we're not doing things right. We're confident in the decisions you're making. Where does that fall? I- if we've got employees that are there, are they believing that or are they trusting your word? How does that work?
Well, I imagine probably most of them are watching tonight, so. We'll, we'll get an idea if my car is egged out there. So yes, members, members of any fire department can be part of the, part of a union. The unique thing about North Carolina is it's, they don't have collective bargaining. So I guess like any of us would join a group or, or whatever, I guess you join that group. There may be some, some benefit to that, that, that because of what your interest is. So obviously our firefighters have some interest in firefighting. So they, they get some level of training at that, at that organization as well. Um, and they get some benefits that probably, I don't know what they are, as I'm not, never have, never been a part of the union. But I think they get some like financial benefits if they get that, you know, destitute or things like that. So there's, they pay dues and there's some benefits to that. They probably get some life insurance policies or things like that. But you're right, they also use that organization as a tool, right? To come out with, you know, whatever their initiatives are. I would imagine, not speaking for them, but most groups have, you know, some agenda or some priorities that they want to push within, within their organization. And I would imagine they have the same thing. The disappointing part for me was what I saw on social media was a surprise to me. I did not get a phone call or an email from anyone in that organization that said, hey, because you're closing a station down, we're going to start posting that on social media. So again, that's why the first thing I said, I would offer up to meet with anybody. And we, matter of fact, their prior president of the local union, we, we sat down with that individual and, and I thought we all walked away from that table with the agreement that it's better to communicate and work together than it is to do the opposite of that. Somewhere or another, we've lost that and we need to get, communicate with that organization again, to hopefully get that common ground together where, where they understand where as fire chief I'm coming from, where my goals are, the town goals, town council goals, and everybody get on somewhat the same page. Are we all going to have a kumbaya and agree on everything? No. But at least we know where you, where they stand, where we stand, and I don't get this blindsided, you know, post out there one day. That, that.
It just seemed very counterproductive when, when I read it and, and I would have thought they would have been fighting for their own men. And it seemed very divisive. So that was part of my question. So thank you.
I got one thing I want to add about the union thing. I was a member of the machinist union for thirty-two years at the airport. You're right, firefighters don't have to join. But we're under railway labor act like we were, we had to do it.
We don't have that, you're right.
Well, you don't have it with the fire department. I was a member in Charlotte airport thirty-two years because we were under the railway labor act. And we organized and we had to join. We were all union, but fire department, you're right. I don't know what the benefits are there either. All I'm saying is the teamsters truck drivers for UPS, they have to, they're all, they're all.
I mean, I get that. I just, I just think it's kind of productive.
It is. They should have definitely let him know what's going on. And I was out a ton of weekends, so I really don't know what happened, but they should have definitely called him. I think the biggest thing at the fire department is, is to pay. Nobody's saying that we don't give them the best benefits, but you can't buy groceries, you can't buy house benefits. And me and Rob talking about it, you're right, we give them great benefits, but the, the study's out of date and, you know, we need to step up to the plate. Um, I don't know how you're going to do it, what you're going to do, but we need to do it. Because there's no reason we should train a guy in Concord to come here for six months and leave and go to Charlotte. Now, if you think that you're going to say to the guy, we trained, you guys stay here for a year, we're going to give you some kind of bonus. That's, this is not, isn't that, isn't that world that like you work in? You know, you know what I'm saying? Bank of America, Wells Fargo. You're not going to tell someone, I'll give you two grand, you guys stay here for a year because they're going to say, no thanks, because they know what's on the other side. So we're going to have to make some kind of decisions here. It's might not be good for everybody, but you're going to have to pay these guys, but they're not going to stay. And there's no other way around. We've done everything else.
Well, I mean, when we're at forty-eight cents already and, you know, at that point, now you're talking about, do we, do you raise taxes? And if you raise taxes, to get to that fifty thousand mark, I think it's like four cents, right? So would the residents pony up for that or do you start cutting services to accommodate for it?
Because we have some of those services. So that's probably not where we want to be at, you know what I'm saying? Just for that. But, um, you know, then you got to put what, six, six percent in to get your, you got to put your six percent in to get your six percent.
It's two now.
Two for firemen, two for us to put in, to get in their, their, so F four one K? So if they can make forty thousand, they have to give, there's a two percent where off the bat.
So we, we give three percent, no matter what you put in. And then if you put in two, we'll put in another two. So we put in five if you put in two.
That's a good deal. But like I said, these young kids can't buy a house. First of all, can't live in Harrisburg. I mean, there's, that's the problem. Nurse, teacher, fireman, police officer, probably can't afford to live here.
Well, we, we know that though, because of the land prices and it's not anything you and I are up here governing. It's landowners. We've been told by Mike Shay, you know, when somebody sells their land, they want you to buy their, uh, existence on earth, their, their heritage or their lineage, lineage of their family, right? So when you're buying it from whatever, you're probably at, you know, hundreds of years worth of.
Well, I knew this was going to happen when I moved there in ninety. Cause all these poor people passed away and their kids got this land. And I talked to Rodney about it a long time ago, but they're just selling the land. Uh, they got the right to sell the land. I mean, and it's up to us to guide them to build a decent product, but there's so much land here in ninety, there's still a ton of land. If you drive out Hickory Ridge Road, there's land everywhere. I mean, that's going to be sold at some point, type, and there's going to be houses and you still can't find a house in Harrisburg. So.
I mean, I've had conversations with developers about how do we do something like that offer? And it's, you know, there's the idea that you start to offer something like that and then it becomes an issue of, these investors go in and buy it out before you know it. You know, it's not what it's meant to be, right? It's not for the fireman, the teacher, the policeman. It ends up being who, who's whatever rental house.
Right. So we don't like that either, but. Well, that's council, whoever it is is going to have a good, hard job. You give these firemen up to pay, that's all I can tell you. You know, there's no, I have no answer. I just, I don't know if it's tax increase.
So let's talk about that. So that seems to be the big thing. Is the big thing is that if we, I'm going to throw an outrageous price, let's say we paid them all one hundred thousand dollars. Is that going to solve the problem? Is, is it going to solve the problem?
Until Charlotte pays a hundred and two.
Okay, so, um, Mr. Town Manager. So because we know that, that it's being said, this council is not for the fire department, that they, they don't want to give it. So if we put this vote, because it's going to be the taxpayer paying for it, we got to come up with the money somewhere. So when's the soonest we could get a referendum out there to say, we want to increase the pay exponential on the firefighters? And this is the, uh, percent or the cent per hundred that it would cost your increase in your taxes?
Well, Rob, those, a lot of the interest here, Rodney, is you got battalion, he goes by years of service and I'm not, I don't want to get into it, but you have battalion chief here making a thousand dollars more than a captain because of years of service. It has to be separated when you get into a different category. When I get into a lead agent at the airport, I was making my base salary plus whatever it was, the elite agent. That's what, that has to happen here. You got battalion.
We've got, we got to get the money somewhere. So we've got to figure out where to get that money. So that's my question first. Let's figure out if we can get the money. So how can, when can we get a referendum? How do we go about doing that and let the voters put it? And let's remember that if we say it's the town of Harrisburg voters, that there's many, as uh, Councilman Smith said, that are out there in the county that pay a Harrisburg fire tax, that they'll never get to vote on. They'll never get to say, hey, I want to, or I do not want to.
I don't know off the top of my head, the, the referendum, uh, laws and deadlines and things like that, uh, but I'll get, I'll get you that information. But I, I will say, however, I don't know what that timeframe is, but we're going to solve our staffing issue well before a referendum comes up. So it really comes down to what, what do you, what do you, what's the goal, right? Wha- what are your goals? What are you trying to achieve by a referendum? What would you be trying to achieve by a tax increase? What would you be trying to achieve next year when we have a re-eval and people are asking for tax cuts? You know, tho- those are, those are, you know, all different solutions to those problems, but, you know, I've, I've been trying to take notes. It's been, it's been going around, uh, hot and heavy here, but, uh, you know, we did a pay study last year in September and we adjusted, um, all of our employees' pay. And I know we're talking about fire because of the special interest and the media coverage, but all of our employees are in the same boat. This isn't about fire, uh, employees. This is about public employees. And when we did that study, we set our employees, um, in the local market at the second highest paid employees behind Charlotte. Charlotte's very hard for us to compete with. They have a lot more money. They have some things that we can't even offer. Um, some of our firemen, even if we pay the exact same as Charlotte, we don't have the airport. You want to work at an airport? Can't do it Harrisburg. Um, we don't have division chiefs. We don't have nearly as many battalion chiefs. So if you want upward mobility and you want to fight lots of fires, Harrisburg's not going to be the, the end, um, ending place for you. You're going to go to a larger department. You're going to go to Raleigh or Greensboro or, or Charlotte. And Charlotte's the largest department between Washington DC and Atlanta. It's a pretty tough rival for us to compete with. So what we did is we said, okay, take Charlotte out of the equation. We'll try to keep it within striking distance, but can we compete with everybody else? And the answer is yes. And, and so we did. We set that at September. Now the market's moving fast. Four of those ten communities that we, um, included in our pay study last year have done pay studies of their own. And what I committed to of how we were going to solve this long term, because we know that we have record low unemployment. Um, we have wage inflation that's outpaced, uh, wages for the last eighty years. So this is going to be a problem. I, I said this in my interview for, for those that were here on the previous council. You asked me what the greatest challenge I thought was facing the town. And I said it was just this, staffing, finding people to fill these jobs and keeping, finding the resources to pay for everything that we need to do. And, and it is, it's, it's, it's the biggest problem. So we did this pay study. We decided we're going to be. We decided we're gonna be leading the market in pay. We're gonna lead the market in benefits. We're gonna have the best facilities. And then annually, when we go through the budget process, we would reevaluate that with any new numbers that come out with anybody else that's leapfrogging. And that our staff would have to get together, come up with a plan and present that to council each year in the budget and try to see what we can do to keep pace. And so that's what we will do. That's what we did last year. That's what we'll do this year. Um, even if we do that, we will lose a sizable portion of some of our employees to Charlotte. We've lost some engineers that have went over to Charlotte that have gotten almost fifty percent pay increases because they don't require, um, some of the, uh, they don't require a professional engineering license to jump into some of the roles that, that they pay um, or that they have over there. Um, we're gonna lose, uh, some of our firemen to Charlotte for either compensation or just career progression things. And we need to be ready to attract the next generation of talent in here to fill those roles. And, and there's gonna be a certain portion of that. And as we have, um, our upper level management positions open up, then we'll have a good pool of young talent that we can promote from within. And, and that'll be our model. And I think is, as long as we stay at the leading edge of that, we're in good shape and we're well funded and well um, positioned to do that. I just think i- it's very unrealistic for anyone to expect us to do that in shorter periods than one year. That's, that's as quick as, you know, that's the most bites of the apple that I get. Right? I get to present you guys a budget one time per year. And then I have to wait another year to, to see what the revenues are gonna be, where we ended the year, and then we'll adjust from there. So those that are too impatient to, to get through a year, it, that's, that's gonna be a tough group for me to deal with. Um, but I think we're, we're well positioned. We, we did a pay study. We set ourselves at the top of the market. We'll look at it again this year and make sure that our numbers are, are still good. That being said, I wanna make it very clear, whatever we do, if we lead the market here, that isn't enough to attract people into public service throughout the country. North Carolina is, is forty-fifth out of fifty in firefighter pay.
Say that one more time.
No, North Carolina is forty-fifth out of the fifty states in firefighter pay. So as a state, if we don't start putting our public employees at the top of the list for value, we're gonna continue to have this, this problem as we grow. Teachers are leaving North Carolina at a record pace. Police officers are leaving the profession at a record pace. Firefighters are not joining the, the profession. We, we need more firefighters in Charlotte than we've ever needed before, in the Charlotte metro than we've ever needed before. And it's harder to get them than ever before. I would say what, maybe ten years ago, chief, you had waiting lists to get on fire departments. You were just, you were begging, you know, hoping to get on that list. Um, you know, now we're, we're, we're trying to poach from each other just to keep services going. So I, I just wanna be clear, we can lead here. We can, we can lead our peers and, and we can attract local talent. But there is, there's a national and statewide crisis in us attracting all public servants, not just firemen. Police officers, solid waste workers, public works, people that treat your water, treat your sewer. We, we don't have enough people going into these professions, and it's gonna be harder and harder for us to compete in the long term.
So you said earlier that we did to pay increases. Correct? Is that what I understood?
That, that's, um, I didn't say it in this meeting, but that's, uh, I think you probably read that in the media reports.
So it was to pay increases plus the bonus we did with, when we recognized where we were, we gave all the employees a bonus to hold Tahisha over until we could better understand where everybody was.
Yes.
So there was three adjustments essentially in that window of a period of what, eighteen months?
Yes.
Okay. So we were showing that, right? We're, we're, hey, we know, we know that you're bleeding. We're working on it, right? So now the next question that I pose to you is, it seems cyclical where and, you know, when Rick said, you know, we asked about pay and, and, you know, and Rodney says, well, if we get them to a hundred thousand, you know, my response back is, long till Charlotte gets to a hundred and two. So like in my field, I can't complain and raise the sand and where I'm sitting and say, I'm not being paid enough. My company tells me when they do pay reviews. And in my world, I think it's like every thirty-six months at best. We're looking at it almost semi-annually. I would guess right now, when does that stop? I mean, I know we went back to Tahisha this last year and said, hey, beef up the, uh, benefits to help these folks out, give them more reason to say, hey, I've got all these reasons to stay. I know the young guys have done applies. It's more the family folks. And maybe we're recruiting towards the wrong folks. Maybe we need to be looking towards the older generation to say, we got the benefits, baby, come see us, right? But when do we get out of that cycle of semi-annually, annually?
It's, it's, I mean, that's a great macroeconomic question. So we used to do these, um, pay studies every six years. And that was fine. It worked. And then we went every three years because the market moved too quick. My commitment to you is I can look at it every year and we'll pull this data and we'll do the best we can to project annually, are we falling behind? Are we staying paced? Um, and until the labor market stabilizes, it'll, we, we won't get out of it. Uh, when the, when the labor market stabilizes, we might be able to move to two years and then three years and, and, and not have these, these huge, um, you know, sways and, and what the market says, but, um, we're, we're in a tight labor market and it's, it's very tough to get these employees. And again, I think, I think the, the, the dollar amounts, obviously, you know, all of our resources are competing resources, right? So, um, do you have more to fire? You know, last year we decided we, we really needed to invest in, in our police force. Um, you know, we, we, we have all of these competing resources, but we're, we're pinned in by however many dollars that, that we have. We, we're not a for-profit and even if we do the best around here, you know, we'll, we'll be doing okay. But it won't eliminate the problem that the cost for our employees compared to the private sector, you know, the cost of their goods and services compared to their salaries versus the private sector, um, is a real hardship and it, it hasn't always been like that, right? I mean, you, I don't remember who, I, you know, you and Rick, uh, went back and forth on housing prices. But how do you expect a, a young person nowadays, e- even, even if, you know, I don't, what, what's Charlotte paying right now, chief? For, for fire, um, for an entry level guy, roundabout. I don't need an exact number, but let's.
I understand, starting over there now is like fifty-five.
Yeah. So let's say it's fifty-five. And let's say you're a young person and you're making fifty-five. You think you can afford a house today? A new car, a new car? How about if you start a family, you send that kid to, to college? Groceries are twice what they used to be. So, you know, these are problems facing the country and they're especially hard on young people. And they're especially hard on public servants. And it's driving more and more people away from these jobs, these critical jobs that keep the rest of society going, right? Transportation, public safety, sanitation, um, security. The, the, these are the things that allow us to then have, uh, private enterprise and technology and entertainment and, and the other things that we, we all like to talk about in the economy. But if we don't have good people coming in to, uh, public service, then we're, we're gonna be in a world of hurt for a long time nationally. But I, I don't want to pretend like Chief Dunn and I are gonna solve it. All right, we're gonna do the best we can to make sure that, 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 you know, we're competing locally. But as long as, uh, costs keep outpacing wages and as long as the public sector is looked upon as less than the private sector, um, we're gonna continue to have issues like this nationally. And as long as the labor market is tight, we're gonna have these issues nationally. And, you know, we will make sure that we are able to provide all the wonderful services that Harrisburg is used to. But we will continue to have these types of conversations throughout the community, um, whenever these, these come up. And, um, I don't wanna pretend like this, this won't be a long-term issue, because it's, it is, and it's, it is for us, it is for Concord, it is for Kannapolis, and it is for Baltimore and Boston and Cleveland, Ohio, back home where I come from, all have the same problems.
So with that said, would you please tell your staff, Chief Dunn, that I do appreciate them, that we all appreciate them? And I still welcome for them to come in here and just sit down and let's talk here, um, about stuff.
Thank you just said.
Thank you.
No, I appreciate them as well, the ones that are left. I appreciate town council and I certainly appreciate the community's support that we always receive.
Longest fire report in the history of town.
Maybe.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Dunn. Just, um, thank you, Chief Dunn. Appreciate that. Um, just a couple of mayor comments. Um, I don't think there can be enough thank yous for our town staff and sponsors and volunteers in our community for the July Fourth festivities. I mean, we, we could just say it over and over again, but it was really something special to see so many families enjoying those events and the parade and looking forward to the upcoming Rockin' the Bird concerts, as well as our fiftieth anniversary celebration on October fourteenth. Um, just to kinda echo on a couple of things that Chief Dunn talked about, you know, it's election season. This is no surprise. Happens every single time. And that reoccurring theme of folks using that social media, um, platform, um, really to kinda solicit community outrage, disparage council, myself, town staff, you name it, we were kinda all open game for that. Um, and it's typically the same folks that, that choose that form of communication rather than really coming to the table and having conversations. And I can't change that, but I can ask you that if you do have questions, as Chief Dunn even pointed out, please let us know and come to the source, because we're all an open book. In fact, almost everything we do is all public record. I mean, there's no, it's all an open book for all of us. Um, I think this latest ploy though, to really incite what I would call public safety concerns, um, with regard to our fire department coverage was largely inaccurate, grossly misleading, irresponsible. And for me personally, I found it entirely disrespectful to Chief Dunn, who has dedicated his life to public service and worked so hard to make sure that his firefighters and our community are adequately covered and safe at all times. So, um, to echo his comments, we have not received, I have not received any phone calls, emails or otherwise, just screenshots of things that have been, um, put out on social media, because I typically do not go down that rabbit hole. Um, but if you wanna know more, get involved and ask. Um, some people like to complain, some people like to ask questions and understand what's going on, and some people like to be part of the solution. Take your pick. I can tell you which one I would like to see everyone be a part of, but um, appreciate our fire department, our town staff, really all of our departments, because that's really what makes community what it is and why Harrisburg is so great to be in. So with that, I will move if there are any council comments, and we do have Alteen joining us online. So Alteen, just chime in if you wanna make comments as well.
So look, it was great July third, July the fourth. I really enjoyed it. And I know many of our residents did. They particularly enjoyed the extra little gifts that we threw out that, um, where it said fiftieth on it though. So I hope we can continue that in the future. Thanks to your staff. And I just wanna remind the people that they're saying we spent a lot of money. Well, some of that money came from ARPA. And ARPA was federally funded. Now that's your federally funded tax dollars, but it did not come out of your local tax dollars. But we wanted to this year to throw out more because it was our fiftieth year. So, um, just thanks again to the staff. Thanks to everyone that was out there. It was a, it was a great time.
Federally funded debt dollars. Fed- federally funded debt dollars.
Well, my, yes. And, and I echo what Rodney has said. Um, every time I saw anybody that worked at the town, whether it be a police officer, fireman, um, whether it was Rob, whether it was Jim, Aaron, you name it, if I saw you, I'd tell you thank you. I just appreciate, we know, we, I, I was telling folks at work on Wednesday morning, I did not do a lick of work on Tuesday or Wednesday, other than go to these events, be out in the heat. Um, did the parade out in the heat on Wednesday. And I promise you, Wednesday morning, I felt hungover as hell. I, you know, I was just kinda like, and I don't know how you guys did it, because you put in a week's worth of work, more than that, but the week leading up to it was day in, day out, getting everything there. So I couldn't imagine how you feel, knowing how I felt Wednesday morning. So thank you all for that. Um, Jennifer, to your comment about phone calls or emails, I did receive one phone call. I will tell everybody in this world that'll listen that I will sit on Facebook all day long. I will give you my phone number all day long and ask you to call me, beg you to call me. And I still say that today, call me. Let's have a conversation. Let me help you understand what maybe you're not hearing, or maybe what you think you've heard, but that's not the case. But I did, in the last three weeks, received one phone call. I spoke with a gentleman. We were good at the end of the phone call. I think he's even reached out to Rob later. I will set up meetings with folks. If it needs to go further, you feel you need to talk to somebody in the town, I'll do that as well. So do call me, but, uh, yeah, we only, only got one phone call.
Any other council comments? Alrighty, with that, we will move to our public hearing comment, and Zach's going to be up with us for a bit. This is on the Callaway Essex Homes considering the adoption of development agreement between town of Harrisburg and Stanley Martin Homes.
There he may. Well, I'm gonna try to not be the fire chief. So how about that? Um, well, we have three public hearings tonight. I'll get right to the, uh, first one and Rich is to my right, uh, your left. And he will, uh, jump in if I do anything that's not, uh, not right. Um, so the first public hearing is a, uh, development agreement for Callaway Essex Homes. This was a subdivision that was approved back in two thousand eighteen, early two thousand eighteen. And play there, um, and this development agreement is really, um, in, uh, the, the purpose is to memorialize or formalize a proposed reimbursement by the town for improvements to the, um, public right-of-way road system. We'll, we'll review what those are, uh, for up to a hundred thousand dollars. Um, in terms of the development, uh, again, we're not here to talk about the development. The development has been approved. The rezoning has been approved. The subdivision is approved. This is simply to have a public hearing about a development agreement to formalize an agreement between the developer and the town. Um, so why a development agreement? Well, uh, number one, it clarifies the obligations of both the town and developer. Um, or dispersment, in this case of public funds. Um, is also to provide assurance that developer of the town's financial commitment um, in advance of developers' investment, significant investment in this project. And again, just to reiterate, this development agreement does not change any of the terms of the conditional zoning approval or the preliminary plat- approval that's the basis for the subdivision. So just to give a quick overview, uh, the statutes provide for, uh, local governments to enter into development agreements with developers. And again, these set forth obligations of not only local government and developers, but also scope, the scope, terms, cost sharing of any public improvements that would be made in conjunction with a development project. Uh, development agreements may be adopted after a public hearing. Now, these are in conjunction with a request for rezoning or separately after rezoning approval. Now, this development agreement is coming several years after you approved the subdivision. Um, going forward, our intention is to sync them up. And so they would be at the same time. So we would not have the separation, uh, but that's a change you'll see moving forward. Um, and again, real simple, the development agreement, uh, between the town and, and Stanley Martin Homes itemizes the public improvements to be made by the developer of the Callaway, uh, age-restricted seventy lot, uh, development subdivision, uh, including agreement by the town to reimburse up to a hundred thousand dollars of the cost of additional improvements to Robinson Church Road and Rocky River Road intersection. So here is the subdivision that was, um, this is a site plan that was approved. It's two phases, fifty and twenty lots. These are the required public improvements. Um, access to the subdivision, left turn lane in, right turn lane in, left turn lane. Left turn lane at Robinson Church Road, Rocky River, signal improvements in conjunction with those, uh, with that turn lane. There's also decommissioning of Kensington Forest Pump Station, which will take place, removal. And, um, restoring that, uh, to, uh, natural conditions. Then we have additional improvements and this really is the focus of why we're talking about a development agreement. So there are two. Uh, one is as you head south on Robinson Church Road, a left turn lane onto Rocky River Road. So this would be right here. Second is additional storage. Um, for a left turn lane on Rocky River heading north onto Robinson Church. In this area here, you can see the cars already lined up, perfect picture. Um, I didn't, uh, I, I didn't cherry pick that. That just turned out great. Thank you, um, Google Maps. So as we have, um, been doing, uh, just to point out what the implications are from a sewer standpoint. Um, you can see that the current capacity and the numbers that are shown in terms of utilization. Um, and by the way, thanks to Marilyn, uh, uh, Mallory. I have a Merrily sister-in-law that I was just talking to, so I got tongue down. Thank you, Marilyn, Mallory for putting this together. Uh, but you can see the highlighted yellow line up top, that is utilization right now. In other words, what we have committed. Uh, with the Callaway allocation, if we did this entirely fifteen thousand seven hundred fifty gallons per day. Uh, we would go from a, uh, allocation of, um, you can see that the numbers here from twenty-two percent. We'd add twenty-six to a forty-eight percent total allocation. And that would be for the entire seventy lots. So the action requested tonight is to consider adoption or the public hearing. Uh, for adoption of the development agreement between the town of Harrisburg and Stanley Martin Homes. Um, and, uh, if the, uh, decision is to move ahead, uh, the staff recommendation would be to. Uh, adopt the agreement and authorize the town manager to sign the agreement on behalf of the town. And if there's any questions, I'm glad to answer them or Rich or Rob.
So we've really not seen this before, right? A development agreement come before us as a separate. So when I went back and looked at when this was approved, council members expressed concern that the NCDOT is not requiring. A turn lane at Rocky River and Robinson Church. So how are we able to get that now? NCO DT didn't require it then, but just everybody's in agreement now.
We required it as part of our TIA.
But there's been another TIA done on the project since.
No, no, this, the things you see in this development agreement are reflective of the rezoning, conditional rezoning passed at the time. I think at the time DOT was wishy-washy about it, but we negotiated it with the developer at the time.
But I'm pulling up the minutes, it's two thousand and eighteen where it was passed. And it said council members were concerned that the agency, so that TIA, the end said that there should be those turn lanes there?
I, I would have to look back exactly what the TIA said, but we negotiated these two improvements as part of that conditional rezoning. And if I'm wrong in that, correct me, because that could be.
Development agreement question. So we haven't done this historically. They're typically captured in the conditions of rezoning. But, and to correct me if I'm speaking out of turn, but we've kind of gone through issues where we're having issues with phasing development improvements. Or other items of conditions of rezoning. So this document is an attempt to really formalize what the developers requirements are, the timing of those requirements before the project starts. This is a unique case where this, you know, this project has been in the works for a very long time. Some of the things that they've been working through are, are easement, um, acquisitions and, and other things, permanent approvals. So it wouldn't be typical that this takes so long, but just in an example, you'll see one soon for Camilla Gardens. A project that's already started development, but we want to really formalize what the town's contributions are to them, the timing of those contributions. And by contributions to them, I mean to the improvements that we requested above and beyond what a TIA might have required. I don't know if that answers the question any better, but that's my stab at it.
Yeah, I, I think Councilman Nillander's question was, he, he thought that only one of these two was required when we passed it and now there appears to be two, right? Um, and I think.
Only the left turn lane onto Rocky River or onto Robinson Church?
It says it is not requiring a turn lane at Rocky River and Robinson Church. That's all it said.
Yeah, I, I can't speak to those minutes, but I know this is what we negotiated at the same time with the developer as part of the, uh. Rezoning of what we felt was a safety issue versus a capacity issue.
And as part of that negotiated, the town's contribution to those improvements that went above and beyond what the TIA required.
Yeah, we are paying for some of this.
And how far is the entrance from, from Rocky River?
It's south on that map, uh, just off the screen, like where the, where the cutoff of that map is.
Okay. While you're up there. I got confused with the allocation because I would have thought we would already included it since we had approved these. I thought they would go in, in the baseline of our.
That's a great question. We have not approved the sewer flow allocation for this project yet because we wanted to work out a development agreement with the developer. And in the development agreement, we're, we're basically promising that flow.
Okay, so I guess how many other approved developments did we have sitting like this that we will come back? I mean.
That will be coming back to ask for an allocation?
Yeah, right. Do we know?
None that I'm aware of. You know, like Camilla Gardens has already been approved, Harmony. Do a development agreement for the time of their signal. That's already been approved. So any, anything that you've seen already started construction that you may see development agree to come forward for. It would more be for timing of improvements.
I mean, one of the benefits of those, and I remember voting for it was not only the, the second interest to Kensington, but it was also the decommission of. The, the pump of the silver water, water pump over there. Uh, but it did that, that's still happening.
That is still happening. And, and another thing that this agreement will do will, will really hone in on the timing of those things being done in order for them to move on with building new lots.
So when will we expand? How many lots will have to be built before these improvements are done?
I think there are a lot of the one phase. And that's.
And to clarify the, uh, the allocation, I believe there's only one other project, EPCOM, uh, that we approved that was in that tier one. Um, set of projects, although all of them have passed their, um, six month ability to stay in tier one. Callaway and EPCOM are the only two imminent that we believe will, uh, that we've kind of promised. Um, allocation to i- is part of that tier one, but then they all allow that to lapse. So now they're back into the pile. But Callaway and EPCOM are the two we expect to ask for it. Um, everybody else is kind of in the same boat as all our bar, our buy right. Um, rezoning, so any, anybody out there could come and ask for allocation on any property we have right now, as long as they need zoning.
My misremembering, I thought. A different project had already agreed to put in the left turn in this area. What was the, um, it was mixed use up front. It had.
You're thinking Hickory Ridge Road?
Yeah, that's.
Has almost.
They already have a left.
They, they, they have a very similar situation going on, right? You're talking about the Bloom Corner.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, it's, it's very similar, uh, to this situation. Um, I do not recall if we had matching funds in that project with this one. I think that may be the, uh, part of misremembering that, that Rodney and I are doing is that. They're solely responsible for the Rocky River left and that we have a hundred thousand in, which is basically paying for the Robinson Church left. So that, that may be where the discrepancy there is.
For the Stallings Robinson Church.
We do there as well.
Okay.
They'll build the project and then we'll reimburse them. So they'll, they'll do it all and then we'll reimburse them. The cost allocation, the, the costs they're going to spend here, um, compared to what they were when we approved this project in twenty eight. They're going to spend way more than a hundred thousand and they're not happy about that, but they understand that. And, um, that's just, uh, the situation all developers are in at this point.
But this is, this is stuff they didn't agree to prior.
This is stuff they weren't mandated to do. They agreed to it. They're mandated, I believe. Now, I could be misspeaking here because I don't have all the documents. But I believe. The Robinson Church left turn was iffy and so we put in local funds to get that. That part and that the Rocky River left turn was mandated in the TIA. So this developer agreed to build it, construct it, design it, and we would reimburse them a portion. Of that as part of their original rezoning. Same thing we did with EPCOM at Tom Query and Robinson Church is that they would have to design, build, construct. And we would reimburse them a hundred thousand for that signal as well.
I mean, I, I need some more clarity on that because I, I'm not keen on, if they agreed to do something prior, I'm not keen in kicking more money in. Because for whatever, I mean, inflation or they slow rolled their development. I mean, that's not our problem.
Yeah, I may.
This is real additional work and that's something I'm willing to entertain.
I may have not been clear in saying that, like I, our hundred thousand, we agreed to in twenty eighteen.
Yes.
And that's still what it is.
Yes.
We, we, we're not changing that at all. And that was part of the original rezoning that they would have to build this signal. And that if we wanted that left turn, we'd have to participate up to a hundred thousand. So we, there, there isn't any additional work or additional cost borne by us. I do believe there's additional work and cost that's going to be borne by them. But they have not raised that issue. They're, they're ready to move forward. And in an absent a development agreement, and correct me if I'm wrong here, Rich, but in absent of a development agreement, this work would all still happen. These are still agreements that we made. We've just never formalized them in a document. And due to some of the friction that we've had, uh, as these projects have become more complicated. It's better to have it in a contract form and a development agreement that, you know, Rich can go back and enforce if necessary.
Well, one sixty D that, that statute provided for these specifically. Development agreements.
Are these clad? I mean, if these go to court, you can't break them. I mean, these are clad iron documents. Right? Because I thought that's what a conditional rezoning was.
Well, well Rodney, as much as any contract can.
There was, there was more lawyer involvement in this one, I think, than the conditional zoning maybe in the past, but.
I, I'm still confused. Someone's going to have to explain it to me like I'm five. The item report says additional work. Additional work above and beyond what was agreed to at the conditional reason. No?
Correct.
He's, he doesn't know what he's talking about. No, I'm just kidding. I'm not playing with you. No, I mean, this is, this additional work, I think you're referring to is off-site work.
Right, yeah.
Which was part of the conditional reason.
Off-site work that was agreed to.
Yes.
We agreed to kick in the money.
This hasn't changed in five years.
Formalizing everything that was agreed to back then. Is that what we're doing?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I needed.
Yes.
Yeah, and, and the distance between, I think is, which is why we're going to sync these up together moving forward.
You say additional work and we're paying a hundred grand, you know, my ears hurt. What I understand is we've agreed to this already. We're putting it in.
We're formalizing it.
Understood.
Yes.
So we do have to, um, open this up for the public hearing. So we'll do that and then circle back. Did you have anything else to add up before we open up a public hearing? At this time, we'll open the public hearing. We'll go to those here in person first and then take comments from those of us joining via Zoom. Please be sure to state your name and address for the record. We did have a signup sheet for this particular issue and there was not anyone that signed up. But if there is anyone inside chambers now that would like to speak, please come to the podium and we will honor that. Is there anyone online that would like to speak during public comments on this agreement? Just raise your hand with the hand feature. No one is there. At this time, we will close the public hearing. Now, it is my understanding we do not have to vote on this this evening that we can take.
Yeah, so and Zach clarified the process, but my understanding is, you know, you don't have to. But on a, a routine procedure like this, it would, uh, if it pleases the council, our recommendation is that we go ahead and prove it this evening.
Out of motion to prove it.
There's a motion on the floor to have previous presented. Is there a second? Second, thank you, Rick. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Next up, we have the consider rezoning, request for rezoning and annexation for the property located on Rocky River Road.
Waiting for the signal to travel thirty feet. Maybe it warmed up. Okay, um. Next public hearing is for the, um, Harrisburg Retirement Residents, which is a rezoning. An annexation of property on Rocky River Road, um, currently zone county, uh, office institutional. And conditional zoning GC, uh, will be rezoned to conditional zoning, general commercial. And purposes to develop a site for a hundred and forty-nine, uh, unit senior living facility. Um, the, uh, there was a neighborhood meeting required. This is required for all, uh, development. We have an increase in intensity or density. Planning and zoning board has recommended approval, uh, subject to staff recommended conditions. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions, rezoning of property on Rocky River Road for a hundred and forty-nine unit senior living facility. Subject to town council annexation approval. Let me just state, um, at the beginning, this is different than what you all have seen, at least in the year I have been here. Uh, this is a rezoning for a non-residential project. And so this is not a subdivision. Um, and so if you take action, for example, to approve this, then you will not see it. Again, it will be, uh, processed at staff level. It's not subdivisions and there's no preliminary plat. It would go to staff. Conditional zoning is still conditional zoning, uh, all of the elements of that. Any conditions, any agreement, um, any stipulations would still apply. But if it is approved, it would not come back to you. So I just wanted to, um, because this is a different, um, type of, it's a non-residential, uh, reason.
But yeah, these are residents that live in this building and will be voted in Harrisburg.
Right.
Maybe, right? I mean, I mean. Yeah, different register, but they're residents. So I know it's a tip for tap. So I consider it residential, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it, it's, it's just the processing of it, not the, yeah, nothing else to mention. So, um, I think most everybody's familiar with the site, um, located here. Bojangles here, Cabarrus Woods, uh, residential subdivision to the south. Brookdale Town Homes, which are coming around the corner now. Um, and then of course crosses atrium emergency. Um, and then here is farming up across the, um, uh, and then Chick-fil-A South, as I call it, is right here. Um, and Dunkin' Donuts Jersey Mike's right there. Okay, now that we've got oriented, um, and everyone's hungry, we will try to move along. Um, this is a survey that shows the, uh, the property. Um, a couple pretty pictures, which I'm sure the developers want to show many more. Uh, this is the entrance, uh, east. Uh, so if you're looking from the east to the west, which is how this building situated. That's what you'll see, a little bit different orientation, uh, to the right. Um, the elevations you can see on the left and materials, uh, the upper right is what you would view from the, uh, from Rocky River Road. And then picture to the lower right would be from the rear of the property. Some key issues that I just wanted to raise, uh, from a transportation standpoint are connectivity, uh, which is a UDO requirement. There'll be connections to the east and to the west, to the west of Brookdale Shopping Center, to the east to property, uh, that's undeveloped, owned by venture. Um, and so you have those two connections. Um, the Rocky River cross section, uh, along the three hundred foot. The Rocky River cross-section, uh, along the three hundred foot, uh, plus frontage of this development uh, would be required to be built. So that's a four-lane section, the portion that would be attributed to this development. Number of site trips, thankfully, uh, because of the nature of the occupants will be much less than we would have for a residential, uh, or I, I should say a multifamily, not age, uh, targeted uh, or restricted development or commercial or even office. Uh, so that's a good thing. Um, traffic safety, uh, our recommendation is that there be no left turns from the site, um, which again would be consistent with the cross-section for that road, which would have a median built, um, into, uh, the design. Public impacts, uh, schools, there will be no impact. Public services, limited services required and on balance, this will be a net positive on our tax base. Just a little quick side by side. Um, you can see just a few things to point out. Um, the, the access Rocky River entrance, here's the connection, uh, to Brookdale. Uh, driveway connection with a pedestrian, uh, sidewalk connection as well. Here's the future connection that would go to, uh, the property to the east, which is owned by venture. And, uh, that's a gross overview of the property, uh, what you see in, uh, the dark with, uh, or parking uh, stalls. And then here's the building in the center and there is some, uh, parking, um, uh, what I'll call carriage parking to the, uh, to the south. And so here's a, um, an aerial to show the, um, area where, uh, the four-lane cross-section would be built. Um, you can see the parcel here and this is the frontage, uh, of the property. The, um, recommendation of staff is that this be continued uh, to the, cover the frontage of Bojangles. You can see there's a, uh, a two-lane section here. And so what we don't want is a this and then a that. So we want this to be continuous through the property and that's the, um, recommended. And you can see the section there, two through lanes, uh, uh, median in the center and a sidewalk along the, uh, property, uh, along the right of way. In, um, in terms of the land use plan, this area was designated, uh, mixed use, which includes a blend of commercial and office and residential, various types, um, one to two-story buildings. And it's designed to facilitate both walking and biking. Um, this type of development you would normally see in a mixed area, commercial, obviously with Farmington coming online and all that's happening there, uh, we have a a, a mixed use center that is, is going to only grow over time. The, uh, proposed general commercial conditional zoning is consistent with this land use plan, um, of mixed use, um, for this, for this particular development. In terms of, uh, facilities, adequate facilities, I'll, I'll show you a, um, uh, take, uh, a slide on the sewer in just a second. Uh, but sewer and water are both available. Uh, safety sanitation services would be provided upon annexation. A TIA was not required. Um, however, the Rocky River cross-section would be required to be built. The reason the TIA wasn't required is that because of the trip generation for this type of facility, it didn't hit the threshold and so there was no requirement for a TIA. Um, obviously schools, uh, no students will be generated by the proposed retirement facility. And so here's a, um, a s- a slide just to show you the, um, impact of the Hawthorne. If you did an allocation, you can see the figure is about eighty-nine hundred gallons per day, uh, which would be about a ten percent increase. Um, and adding to the existing, uh, committed utilization, that would bring us to about twenty-four percent. Um, and so this would be if this were approved and if the, um, allocation were to be made. And so the actions requested would be to hold a rezoning, uh, hold a public hearing for rezoning and annexation of this property, uh, from CZ, GC and OI County to uh, town of Harrisburg CZGC. Our recommendation is to conduct a public hearing on the rezoning and annexation. We consider a final decision at the August fourteenth town council meeting. Conditions recommended by staff, the, uh, first three uh, are, uh, fairly standard. Number two is obviously that's restricted for, restricted to the use that was, um, that, that's being proposed, which is, uh, age-restricted, uh, retirement residence. And then, uh, that, uh, all of the site plan architectural renderings be included in the conditional zoning requests. Conditions four, five and six are related to, um, the tran- transportation improvements and connectivity. Uh, number four is the construction of the, uh, cross-section on Rocky River Road, which is called for by the Harrisburg Conference of Transportation Plan. And I showed you the cross-section for that. And these would, uh, also include, uh, appropriate traffic control measures prohibiting left turn movements from the site on the Rocky River Road. And the, um, extension of these improvements to the west, the tie into the, uh, existing uh, plane, uh, lane configuration in front of Brookdale or tying into Brookdale Shopping Center. Um, obviously we gotta work with DOT as their road, so we will, uh, coordinate closely with them. Obviously, uh, town staff, uh, public works, engineering and, uh, the, uh, town manager's office. Um, number five and six refer to the, um, connections to the west. Number five, uh, with pedestrian access from the site to Brookdale Shopping Center. And number six is connection to the east of, to the property that is currently vacant. And again, I'll just leave this up here, uh, for any questions, but I'm done. If there's any, uh, any questions I can answer, uh, or, uh, we can get the answers.
Counsel, are there any questions before we move to public comment?
I have one. So there's a stub road right near Bojangles that was always intended as a future connection.
Right.
But the staff report talked about concerns with hanging a left out of the main entrance to this property because of, I think, I think it said the curbs and the setting west sun.
Right.
And potentially folks coming off four eighty-five that have been going seventy for a while and they still be in seventy mode.
Right.
The next intersection is not signalized, is it?
Let me go back to the aerial.
Where Rocky River and, uh, Stratford.
So, uh, yeah, your point is that this is not signalized.
That is not.
Right. So you would come up through here, uh, travel through this and then go to the, uh.
Nobody's gonna do that. Nope, they're gonna go right to Stratford, hang a right and then hang the left that we say is not good to begin with. Just, just to clarify, right? That's not signalized. I, I'm just trying to understand.
If the question is, is that signalized? It is not.
It is not. So we're hoping they drive all the way through Brookdale Shopping Center to get the actual signal, which nobody's gonna.
Yeah, so the follow-up question to that is, should that be signalized? Right? I mean, that's that, that's where we're getting at there and I, I do think that eventually gets signalized. I do not believe it has the traffic warrant numbers to be signalized now through NC DOT. I could be wrong on that and, and somebody can correct me, but I believe that's why it's not signalized now. I do believe as it grows out that that'll be signalized and interconnected in. But is it safer to pull out of a driveway in addition to an intersection? That's pretty clear. I mean, two, two pullouts are worse than one pullout, but.
I mean, even if you put a signal there, well, you gotta send them down into that business park to go around and do a U-turn and then come back or they wanna try to do a quick U-turn right there. I mean, there's, there's not a.
What was it? What was that?
I said, even if you put a signal there, right? And they need to go back to four eighty-five. So they're going to, the U-turn is not going to be wide enough.
Oh, if they're trying to make a U-turn on.
So you're gonna send them down in that business park to turn around and.
U, U-turns aren't great on, I'm, I'm not a big fan of those, but, uh, but the question is, it is not signalized. I don't believe it warrants a.
Where, where would the signal go with the hospital?
There. If they expand the hospital, they would, they would need to signalize that as part of it. It would generate enough trips to cause that.
And so it's a hundred and forty-nine units. If it's a single-family residential, we require a TIA at seventy-five and above?
For commercial, seventy-five.
Trips.
Trips. Peak, peak hour trips. Residential's a hundred.
They're all.
And they, and they, I mean, I assume they, who, who did the calculations? Do they do it?
We.
We did it.
Well, no, we, so the, they did some calculations, re-reviewed them. Um, I think they were, if I remember right, about forty-nine, if I remember correctly, uh, applicants, engineers here, they could probably answer that.
ITE publishes these numbers. I mean, they're not, it's, it's just a.
I know. It's, it's, yeah, graphic. I mean, I'm not opposed to the project in, in theory, but I'm not sure all this has been worked out on the road stuff. That's just, that's just kind of how I feel. I won't let others speak up.
So the road coming out is there at the three eighteen, right? And you said it was gonna be a median? Is it gonna be a solid median? Am I gonna be able to turn left? I come out of the development, the complex right there.
No, it says you can't turn.
No, no left.
Because they think it's unsafe. We town thinks it's unsafe.
So there will be a hard median there and they'll go to the right. So how far are we gonna have to get over the left-hand lane? Which won't be a turn lane or will be a turn lane that goes into the hospital there on the lower entrance. So if I come out at the three eighteen, make a right to get back that way, you know, right there. But there's not a turn lane there. I'm gonna be going into two lanes of traffic, right? And turn it around, someone door it out and make a left.
Yes, I think the, the design of that section is what, um, you know, we're gonna need to work with DOT on. Um, because there's, there's something called a leftover and that's not what you eat the day after you make something. Um, a leftover is where you can go left into the site. You can't go left out. So that is possible. Um, it's a stored, basically it's a protected left turn. No signal, but you go in and you have storage and you can go left and so that's a, that's a possibility.
So the way you get out is like Ian just talked about. I rode over there the other day. And that's, that star road is right behind Bojangles. There's a lot of people who fly in and out of Bojangles to get their food, right? And there is a steep hill. There's something just that.
Kitty school.
Yeah, well, the kitty school is below it, right? Yeah.
Right, kinder care.
Yeah, the kinder care, but.
Right there.
Think about how people walk in to get their burgers and their chickens and stuff. There's something there that concerns me about that being at the speed level. So we can't come out at three eighteen and make a left and we gotta get down across two lanes of traffic. And now the other way to only get out is up on the steep hill behind where everybody's turning into Bojangles.
I think you. I think you only have two options, right? So you, you can either, um, have multiple driveways and take a left out, an opposing left out over three lanes. So two that come through and, and the left turn lane. Or you can allow a left somewhere, wh- wherever the path of least resistance is um, in Brookdale Shopping Center and, and each driver will choose something a little different.
And many people have driven through Brookdale Shopping Center and the traffic going into that Harris Cedar and the bank and that service station. It's almost like you take the life in the hand a little bit because you're trying to look how many different ways to go.
And, and this site will also provide access out and and in, um, to the east to whatever shall develop there long-term. But, you know, so I think those are your, when you look at this from a traffic standpoint, it's actually not that complicated of a site. You're gonna have to have a way to get in and out. So you need a minimum of a right in, right out. And then your lefts are either done at a already existing intersection where you have good site distance and you're crossing one lane of traffic or at the driveways where you cross three lanes of traffic and you're adding a new decision point. Um, the, the obvious third option is you just, you don't develop this site. But I don't think that this site changes no matter what you put on it, whether it be this development or other developments from traffic standpoint. If this site's ever gonna be anything other than a field, it's gonna have to have lefts out somewhere. And there, there aren't a lot of great options on our major corridors as, as you see along forty-nine. And we're gonna start to experience on Rock River.
Unless you the other entrance line up with the.
That's not, it's not the same property. The owner's here if you want to donate that.
So when I look at the, the lower part of the property, I want to move over of that. Now, I'm looking at the lower part of the property. There's a section that's in there that's already in the city limits. It's already part of this project.
Yeah, there's a, there's a piece.
A little piece. And that's where an SCL goes or a BMP. Is that where the BMP is going? You might see it better on the developer's picture.
Yeah, I think right here, right, is where, where the.
Yeah, right there. So that, that, that's actually already in the table, right?
I have to pull, pull up the zoning.
I, I guess it definitely now, I'm just trying to figure out that little section.
It'd be a town pond.
So. So this is gonna be a bra BMP or wet BMP. And I, I know you gotta catch or someone, but is it gonna retain the water? And the rea- the reason I asked is because that water, where's the connection that the water's gonna flow down to? Have those easements been purchased? Is there gonna be a, because those easements are gonna be on county residence. Is that an issue? Do you see what the problem? Because there's gonna have to be some strap. Something put in there, correct or not?
Can, can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
Does the developer have a, a presentation that they plan on giving? Because they may be the people that would best answer these questions as opposed to that, Zach doesn't know these stormwater questions and we could you know, roulette this with Mallory and I and Zach, but if, if they want to give their presentation and then, uh, ask them the questions, I think it'd be appropriate at this point.
I'll be back.
He's coming back.
Good evening. I'm, I'm waiting for my presentation to be pulled up. Mayor Teague, members of council, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. My name is Bridget Grant. I'm a land use consultant with Morin Van Allen. And I am pleased to be here on behalf of Hawthorne with Christine Anzansky and our designer, Brian Crutchfield with Timmins. Let me see if I can get this rolling.
The arrow down there was.
That was very counterintuitive. Again, our team is Hawthorne Senior Living with the Timmins Group and Morin Van Allen assisting on the entitlement side. Hawthorne has a thirty-year-plus history in the senior housing industry. And so I think Christie, as I finish the overview of the site, will give you a good idea about Hawthorne and the brand and answer a lot of the questions that have to do with how the community works, functionality and the age of the residents. They have project continuity because they work through the development company, through the construction company, and then long-term property owners managing the sites. It's a little slow. This is not our first project in North Carolina, though it is our first project in Harrisburg. They've got Shad's Landing and Providence Meadows in Shep- in Charlotte as well as Williams Place on Lake Norman and Davidson. So if you wanted to get an idea of existing communities, you can check out both of those sites. This is not our first project in North Carolina, though it is our first project in Harrisburg. They've got Shad's Landing and Providence Meadows in Charlotte, as well as Williams Place on Lake Norman and Davidson. So if you wanted to get an idea of existing communities, you can check out both of those sites. We are going through conditional zoning, as Zach mentioned. Conditional zoning provides you certainty on the development, community engagement, higher-level design standards and public benefit. So we're going through this process, unlike a buy right development, you get an idea of what's going to happen on the site, what it's going to look like, the exact number of units. We can talk about where the connections are and those items that we've talked about that are above and beyond what's required by ordinance. So when we take a look at this site, you can see Zach already described where it is on Rocky River Road and the great proximity to Farmington and the surrounding uses. We believe we are a great neighbor because we are very low in terms of our impact on the surrounding infrastructure, schools and other resources. When you zoom in a little closer, you can see where the project is in terms of the shopping center. To be clear, there is, there's not a signal. Let me see if I can get the light to work. There's not a signal in this location and there've been conversations that if the hospital develops, the signal might ultimately end up on this side of the site. As you mentioned, there is a part of the site that has already been annexed into the town of Harrisburg, the city of Harrisburg. So the area that's outlined in red. Is already in Harrisburg and we are attempting to annex the balance of the site, which essentially cleans up this project boundary, brings the entire parcel into Harrisburg and lets us develop the site in a unified nature. I'm going to go ahead and jump ahead to this graphic. As it was mentioned, there's an access point primarily off of Rocky River Road. We have sidewalk access around the periphery of the site. We have provided a connector to the Venture Church site when it's ultimately developed. We have formal gardens and amenity areas as well as a covered entrance. You can see we do have our stormwater management area in this location. It is intended to be a dry pond. We have our property trash enclosures in this location. Tree Save is to the south of the site. There are a number of residences who may choose to maintain their car and have it on site. So this part provides them the garage option to maintain their vehicle. There is a kitchen in the building. All of the meals and services are provided through Hawthorne. Again, the buffers are along the edge and a number of amenities. So overall, we're looking at a three-story building with 149 suites and about just over 56,000 square feet with 133 parking spaces. We do also have this connection to the Brookdale Shopping Center. To clarify, it is a driveway, but it's deed restricted and intended for the residents, the property owners on that side. However, we're, we are able to stub up to it to be able to provide that connection. It's the same thing on the other side. This is private property, but the ultimate goal is to give people, excuse me, give people choices when they're leaving the site and they're traveling. When it comes to traffic, we did pull the numbers to answer the question with the number of trips. We are looking at 38 peak trips per day. 11 in the morning and only 27 in the evening. The residents are generally getting all of their meals, needs met on-site. There are a limited number of employees on the site and I think Christie will do a good job of explaining a little bit more about the details of Hawthorne. We have Brian here who can answer questions related specifically to the engineering of the site and then we're happy to answer other questions.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Christina Znansky and I'm here on behalf of Hawthorne. And what I really want to talk to you about is who our residents are. So we have about 90 buildings in operation currently in the United States. 16 of which are in North Carolina. And we love it here and we've had great success and we're looking forward to being a part of this community. Our average resident age right now is 84 years old. They tend to be single. They're widows or widowers. And they generally are in good health. They don't need help with bathing or medication. But they're ready to live in a supportive environment and in a community. Living on their own is becoming difficult. Taking care of things like housekeeping and changing the sheets is, is more problematic as they age. And we give them this community that they're looking for. They're generally coming out of their home for the first time into this kind of environment. And they or their children live within 10 miles of the property. Now, one of the things we talked about was the traffic. And what happens is our residents move in and a lot of times they come with our cars. That's why we have 133 parking spaces. That's why we have the single-story garage structures at the back of the site. Because the car keys still symbolize that freedom and that independence. And they're not ready when they first come to us, but we find within three to four years of being open. They let those car keys go and the cars, they don't want to pay the insurance. They don't want to maintain it. They don't want to do the oil changes. And that has to do with our services. So within our buildings, every resident has a private suite. They are not standalone dwelling units. They are not apartments. They have a small kitchenette with a three-quarter fridge and a small sink. And it gives residents a chance to have snacks or maybe a coffee pot and things like that, but they're really relying on the building for three chef-prepared meals a day that are served in a central dining room restaurant style. We have three different unit types. There's a studio, a one-bedroom and a two-bedroom. Each has a sleeping area, a living space, the kitchenette, as I mentioned, and a full adaptable bathroom. We offer weekly housekeeping and linen service. The three meals a day I mentioned, we also have a snack station. So there's snacks and coffee available throughout the day. And we also have a private dining room on site. So if residents have family that's coming or it's a birthday, Mother's Day, they can just sign up and reserve that space and their family can come and eat with them. Now about 30% of our building is common shared space for all residents. Our goal is to get our residents out of their suites, interacting with the community. We have onsite management that live in the facility that are available around the clock. We have an onsite activities director who plans a constant calendar of activities and social outings. And activities within the spaces inside of the building. So within the building, we have, as you can see in the photo, we have a movie theater, we have a beauty salon, there's a chapel, a library, game rooms. Lots of different activity rooms. And then out, outside, as Bridget had mentioned, we have a barbecue area, fire pit, some formal gardens. And also, as Zach mentioned, we have the sidewalks that go around the site. So walking is a big activity for a lot of our residents. So we make sure that we have ADA-accessible sidewalks that go all the way around the site. So residents can get their steps in. Our activities directors sometimes have walking challenges. So it's a competition to see who can go the farthest. So as I mentioned, we have managers who are onsite 24 hours a day. We also have emergency pull cords that are next to the bed and in the bathroom. So in the event of a resident needs help, they can call the manager who's on duty. We also have a 15-seat passenger van and a driver who can take residents shopping to doctor's appointments. Things like that. So as I mentioned, a lot of times residents come in. They come in with their car keys. They come in with their car, but they get to know Tom, who's the driver. And they'd rather go shopping with their friends or schedule their appointments and go with the van than they would rather drive on their own. The other thing about the traffic, since that was a big part of the conversation, is our peak trips are incredibly low because that's also when we serve our meals. So when everybody's coming off the freeway going 70 miles an hour, our residents are sitting in their chairs having their dinner. Now, all of these services that I mentioned are included in one monthly fee. So all the meals, all the utilities, other than a resident's personal phone and medication, everything is covered by one monthly rent. There's also no big buy-in. There are some senior housing companies where you sell your house, you give them your life savings. That's not how we operate. It's more like a traditional apartment lease, lease, first and last month's rent. And it's just a 12-month lease. So one of the benefits of our project, especially on a site like this that's planned for commercial development. Is we are low impact on city services. We have very low traffic volumes. This is already an area that struggles with traffic. And if this were to be a nine-acre commercial development, the traffic volumes would be much larger than what we're doing. We create a park-like setting. We have good buffers. We've preserved the tree cover at the back of the site between us and the residential homes behind us. We pride ourselves on being a good neighbor and being a beautiful piece of property, both for our residents and the community. We're a quiet, low-impact use and we look forward to being a long-term neighbor in this community. So as Zach mentioned, this is sort of looking to the interior of the building. We have a covered entry. That's the main entry of the building. The sidewalks on site and especially the connection to the public right-of-way lead you to this main entry. This is where guests would come and visitors would come. Around the building, there are also separate entrances for residents. It's similar to a hotel. All the, all the doors are secured. And you can only get in with a key code unless you go through the front door that goes by the main office. In this photo in the front, we also have our formal garden that will be out in the front. That's one of our onsite amenities on this project. And then we've worked really hard to make this a beautiful complementary building. It's sort of a mix of residential elements and also commercial elements just based on its location. We've got change in building articulation, building colors and materials to help break up any long building lengths. We also have dormers. They're difficult to see in this image, but there's dormers on the roof to help break up those rough lines. And our goal is really to create a beautiful complement to the existing development in the area. So Bridget's going to come back.
I'm going to summarize. We worked on the site for a good bit of time with staff and we're thrilled to get their support for this location. It's not often that we get to say it's consistent with the land use. It is complementary to the adjacent uses. As we mentioned, we're a good neighbor. There's tax revenue gain with that low or no impact to traffic or schools. And the use is technically permitted under the existing zoning, but this cleans up that hole and addresses utilities being provided through Harrisburg. So we were asked to seek a conditional zoning through this process. But it isn't the typical conditional zoning when we are seeking flexibility or we're seeking intensity above or we're inconsistent with the land use plan. What we're doing here is essentially giving certainty on what's going to be developed on the site through this annexation. Early on, one of the first comments we had was to just go ahead and, and match the cross-section, the roadway improvements that were included on Venture Church's site next door. And so early on, we were only anticipating doing the sidewalk curb and gutter, which wasn't going to create that intermittent lane widening. When we got asked to widen our section of the road, of course, NCDOT won't let us do it just in front of our, in front of our site. That was where the 318 number was on the graphic that staff presented. So NCDOT won't let you just bump out in one specific area and try to solve for that. So staff revised the request and asked if we would continue that widening down to Stafford. None of this was warranted by NCDOT comments, but we understand that there's a desire to work through and look to see if there are any options. And we're going to continue to work with staff to finalize what can be done, what NCDOT would support from that intersection to the main driveway. And again, this wasn't necessarily required by NCDOT. We generate 38 trips a day total during the peak hours, which is fairly low. And so we just want to find a solution that provides the safest access and accounts for the future widening that's going to happen when additional development occurs. And with that, we're happy to answer any questions.
Keith Bridget, council, do you have any questions before we move into public comments? I'm sorry? On-site security.
So we have onsite management and we do, the management is awake in the evenings. It's not like they're sleeping. And then the front door gets locked. As I mentioned, all the other entrances are secured. So only residents can come and go. And then I believe at 8:00 PM, the front doors are locked as well. I will also say, based on previous discussions, we do have, the site has pretty significant grades. So there's retaining walls. On both the east and west side of the site. At the top of those walls will be. Like ornamental security rails. It looks like fencing. You wouldn't, you would know what it looks like. And one of the things that had come up previously was that they didn't connect at the back of the site where there is a known sort of footpath that has been used and. And so what we have done is we have redesigned it so that that rail will come off the retaining wall and continue and connect to the other one. So from a security perspective, this site will have fencing on the three sides and be open where the traffic connections and the pedestrian connections are proposed.
So that rail, you said three sides?
Yes, east, west and south. I was going to get you back to the site plan. Slowly, by getting there. So behind, so where the retaining walls are, there will be rail at the top of the wall. It's fall protection. But then behind the garages, we've continued it where there is no retaining wall across the grade to the other side to create security on three sides.
Yes, show that again.
The garages are right here. It's two single-story garages and there's, I think, 12 parking stalls total, two of which are where the van, the van sits. The passenger van. That's the little bump out you see on the one building. Right, yeah.
So back to my question previously, the B M P, the S C M. Where does that water connect that's going to come out of that, the sea?
I'll let our engineer answer that question.
So you can see on that. In this corner here, this is where we're proposing the dry BMP with a sand filter for water quality. Generally speaking, the water drains pretty sharply from west to east of this property line. And then there's a low. It kind of follows the property line and even continues out behind these residences. Our stormwater BMP will discharge into that existing system. So we'll be maintaining the existing drainage patterns that are out there today. Water will flow from this site through our pond, be treated, detained and released into its original location where it was going.
So. Have the easements have to be purchased? Anything underground, nothing above that?
Correct. There's existing drainage where that road terminates, Arbordale terminates there. And that's actually, a portion of it is on the, the property here, but we've surveyed this area and determined that we would not need any off-site easements in order to discharge our stormwater drainage.
Sorry, repeat the question? We have, we actually, so just for a little bit of background, we have been looking at this particular site since April of last year. But this might be the fourth or fifth site we've looked at in the town of Harrisburg. We actually looked at partnering with the Venture Church, but our building did not fit with their future plans. So we had met with them before and they were aware that we were looking at purchasing this property and we have stayed in contact with them. After we had received some feedback from council, we had a follow-up meeting with them to discuss the retaining wall. And that retaining wall that faces the church property. That pond is on the lowest part of the site. That's also the lowest point of the Venture Church property. And we pulled up their development plans and actually they have a retaining wall similar to ours on their side of the property. Between them, I think we have a 20-foot landscape buffer. They have a 15-foot landscape buffer. So between the two retaining walls will be 15, 35 feet of landscaping. And ultimately, when we talked to Venture Church, they didn't have a full grading plan. So they didn't necessarily know where their finished floor elevation was going to be. But we estimated that when that building is developed from their finished grade, you'll see maybe six to eight feet of our retaining wall. On the other side of that 35-foot buffer and our pond at its highest point. Because their grades are so much higher and that's such a low point. Does that help? I know it's really hard to visualize it three dimensionally.
So there's no effort to commonly grade together?
Um, there hasn't been.
Seems like it would make more sense to have the potential to reduce some of your higher elevations.
Well.
Make it more flowing as opposed to, we got your wall, he's got his wall.
Grand Canyon.
That is.
We'll finish over the other side.
And, and that is true and it is a bit unfortunate. It is sort of a valley for both properties that comes along that property line. So the natural existing grade of both sites has higher elements with a valley in the middle. And so when, when you asked previously about the area of this site that was annexed in, so there was a. so there was a previous development proposal that actually put the pond on this property. And I'm not sure what happened. We weren't involved in it at that time, but there was an agreement was never reached between the property owners. But that spot right there really is, it's just the natural low point of both properties.
It seems like as community, we'd work together as opposed to against one another.
Just to get clarity on that, I don't know if the sites are necessarily working against each other. They're essentially two different.
It's clear that you have your wall and they'll have their wall. So there's, you know, whose wall's gonna be better, whose wall's gonna be less, you know? And in the meantime, the resident sitting behind, we're gonna see, oh, look, whose wall's better? I mean, I in, in effort of community, I would see it better that we work together as opposed to against one.
The engineer might be able to answer, but I'm not sure there's a way for the sites to be graded together to get the same.
Yeah, I mean, I think because we've got a property line and we've got segregated zoning between the two and what we can actually develop on each site, we would, these would have to be developed at the same time in order to make those completely uniform. But then we also have separate uses that may require buffers between them. So trying to, to develop across a property line, it becomes difficult to do unless you develop both properties under one project, I think is where the challenge is at.
So Mr. Town Manager, that right behind Bojangles, that's not a town street, so there could be a speed bump put there to encourage people coming through Harris Teeter to go out.
Are you asking if we could prohibit a speed bump?
Or going and asking, can we put one there? Could one be put there and be?
I believe it's a private street, so they could. To my, to my knowledge, it's a private street, right?
It's all private. It's all private in terms.
Yeah.
Harris Teeter does not own any of the property. They are a leaseholder in that building. The Brookdale Shopping Center has different ownership who we've also met with that manages the entire property and Harris Teeter is their tenant.
So we don't have any regulation on what they can do on their internal other than their development agreements with the town or their plaids, things like that? They wouldn't have to come to us to ask where to put speed bumps on their own property?
Well, without Harris Teeter, the Brookdale people would do it, they'd have to be.
They could put it at the property line if they chose to.
Did you want to talk about how the, if this is affecting the townhomes that are going next door and how that might look?
Um, I can.
The level, they're gonna be at the same level, right?
So I'm not totally sure about what the townhome grading looks like. I will say, when you go out on site right now, the townhomes have a pretty significant cut at the back of their property. So the townhomes are actually significantly lower than where our building will be. There's also the buffer that we've, we have added in there, the single-story structures that sort of offer a bit of a transition. And then we've worked really hard at the back of the site to maintain as much, I mean, almost all of that existing tree canopy that's at the back of the site. Council, do you have enough of your questions answered to move into public comments? Cause nothing's getting voted on this evening. We'll just do the public portion. Thank you guys so much. At this point, we will open the public hearing. We'll go to those in-person first and then if there's anyone that wishes to speak online, there was not anyone that signed up on the sign-in sheet that was out, but if there is anyone in the council chambers that would like to speak, please come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone internally that would like to speak? Just make sure you state your name and address for the record.
William Leake, seventy-two thirty-eight Sandown Court, Harrisburg. The mayor, council members, city town staff, excuse me. One thing I'm a little concerned with, I want to point out, so on the typical cross section, if I've, I've heard this correctly, this proposed cross section on the whole site that we're talking about, they would only have four and a half foot of planting strip between the five-foot sidewalk and the edge of curb, which is kind of different because they're showing thirty-five foot of additional easement to be dedicated and on their site plan, they're showing a sidewalk that's very far back. But then when we go to the cross section, they're showing a street that shifted very much closer to this development, which appears to be because of a multi-use path across the street. So we would have a ten-foot multi-use path across the street, giving our younger, healthier residents almost ten foot of buffer between them, the curb edge and the sidewalk. Where over here, where we're putting an elderly community, we're gonna give them four and a half foot of buffer between the sidewalk. I just think town staff should really look at that when you do that cross section. That's, I just wanted to point that out. That's all I had.
Thank you, Mr. Lake. Is there anyone else in council chambers? State your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Name, Dwight Gordon, dress forty-two fifty-seven, Queensberry Drive, Harrisburg. So in the presentation, they mentioned that there'll be no left turn out of the property. Based on the traffic pattern today and also the hill coming over where Bojangles is, I think it would be a traffic nightmare. It's coming out, especially if you want to go back on four eighty-five. Because the next turn would, you have to go to Cabarrus Woods, that should try to make a U-turn to go back out. So I think there has to be some more thought have to be, has to go into that planning as far as, you know, how they would situate the entrance or the exit out of that, especially to go back and forth on four eighty-five. So that's, that is a concern of mine as far as, you know, the traffic, you know, especially in the evening. And also mentioned, they mentioned only about thirty-eight cars coming in. I believe that number is pretty low. I think there'll be where more, especially if you have workers coming in and out of the, on facility to, to deal with the elderly there. So I think that number is very, very low and I think there'd be more, more of a traffic nightmare there.
You drive us every day?
Thank you, every day. Yes.
And that hill creates issues already?
Yes, and especially, you know, like when you come up right there, it goes from a two-lane into a single lane. And there are a lot of times people are in the right lane, because the right lane turns off into Bojangles, try to cut over into the left lane and it's always just a race, especially right in that quarter right there. Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Got one more in council chambers?
Hey, David Henderson, eighty-four fifteen, Wonderwood Lane. The church owns the property to the east of this and a couple of notes, maybe just for council, just because we've been in this topic for a long time. According to DOT rules, there won't be a light at Stafford because that intersection is too close to the plaza light. And so DOT would have to violate their own rules to put a light at Stafford. So that pushes the light potential in the future to either that at the hospital entrance or as Starwood. Of course, so that's based on our previous conversations. My thought about the, the new information that I found out just now, one of the reasons we had this agreement in a previous that was this portion was annexed. It was to provide a combined BMP kind of for both sites, future development. And one of the reasons we were not able to move forward on that was the town requirement based on the engineers at the time, that there will be no water flow off our site on top of the ground. And so we were required to secure connection down through six front yards to a culvert that is somewhere around in this location. And that's, that's based on previous requirements of development when we were planning on developing at that time. And that's what eventually slowed that down. So if that requirement is different, I would very much like to know it. And if it's approved, I would like to be able to get that approved for us as well. The, then the third topic for me is the DOT required us, I think a two-hundred-foot stem from the center of Rocky River Road before any before anybody would turn, once, once they turn onto our property, they required a, a stem so that nothing would back up onto Rocky River. So my only, you know, like conversation of the future, if this is approved, is that wherever this stem is right here, that that would meet the DOT requirement for the stem that, that is on our site because if we can't meet DOT standard, you know, to meet up with that stub road in the future, if it's put prior to two hundred feet from the center, if that makes sense. So those are my thoughts. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson. Was there anyone else in council chambers? Yes, just state your name and address for the record, please.
Mike Wallace, eleven four sixty Peach Orchard Road. One thing I want you to think about, all these concerns of left turn out of this property, that is a dangerous section. I drive it every day, but according to their numbers, average person making this left turn is gonna be eighty-four years old. So it's gonna add some more danger to it, so.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Is there anybody else in council chambers before we go to online? If there is anyone joining us via Zoom and would like to make a public comment, please raise your hand.
I am not seeing it.
Wait, do you see anyone on there? Okay. Laura, if you inadvertently hit that, that's okay. But if you would like to speak, just chime in one more time and we'll call on you.
There it is.
That screen's kind of going crazy. Are you seeing something on your end? Is there anyone joining us via Zoom that would like to speak during public comments on the retirement residence?
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes, yes. Just state your name and address for the record, please.
You had me muted. My name is Laura Carricker. My address is nine zero five eight Hickory Ridge Road in Harrisburg. And I want to agree with the traffic concerns. Other people have said, I'll try not to repeat them, but that is a very dangerous intersection there. We have friends who live back off Stafford Road behind the ER and they talk about frequent collisions out there. I don't know if you can get any data from Highway Patrol, Sheriff Department or Harrisburg Emergency responders, but there are accidents. I drive there, I shop there. And just like Mr. Wallace said, trying to make a left turn out of there, especially with older drivers is gonna be difficult. I go to the dentist there where McNeely is across from Cabarrus Woods. It's difficult to get out there. My first suggestion was going to say you should insist that they buy an easement from Venture Church so that they can align their entrance with the hospital or Stafford Road, but for, based on what Reverend Henderson said, they can't do that because of the proximity of the other lights. So I would just like to offer this caution to the town Harrisburg Council. Highway forty-nine is a nightmare with traffic and that is because of a lot of poor planning. The Farmington area is blowing up with development. You're having houses, you're having high-density development with townhomes, apartments and so forth. And traffic is only gonna get worse. Please do not let Rocky River Road become the same horrible mess that Highway forty-nine is. We need as many turn lanes as we can get. We need as many traffic signals as we get. We've got to have better control because anybody who travels that road will see how heavily traveled it is. And with Farmington there, it's just gonna be a magnet.
Thank you, Ms. Carricker.
All right. Please don't.
Is there anyone else joining us via Zoom that would like to speak during public comments?
She was gonna say, please don't.
Good. At this time, public comments are closed. We'll follow back up with Zach. And we'll talk about that next month.
Yes, so again, the, the policy has been set for a two-meeting approach, but we have not discussed the annexation. So I think we probably need to hold a public hearing on that subject so we can cover that base. And then the question really is going to be whether we're gonna hold the public hearing open or whether we're gonna close it for, and, and moving forward. I'm not sure how we're gonna handle that. We can't. Well, we, we can do either. We can hold it open or we can, I know you closed the public portion, but we haven't closed the public hearing.
I don't think we had to have two public hearings for that.
For those that didn't hear me, sorry. Typically, what we've done is, is held the public hearing, opened it, closed it, and then just gave ourselves a month till the next meeting and then we can take action on it. At that meeting, you can, if you wish, and we typically have allow comments in the public comment section or in the agenda section, so.
So we don't need to open up a second?
No.
Okay, so we're going to move on to item number three. This is our final.
Let me, let me clarify. We won't have to open up a second on re-zoning, but I do believe on this agenda, we also have the annexation public hearing as well. So we'll have to open and close that. However, we've already exhausted the the comment on that. So I think that's more of a formality and then both would be heard or both would be eligible for action at the next meeting.
So you need me to open it back up for the annexation portion?
Not back up. They're, they're two separate things, but yes, yes.
Sorry, I thought it was one since we were keeping it open for the next meeting.
Maybe I'm confused here, so let me, let me slow down.
That's what we've done in the past, one public hearing.
I thought it was.
For the combined.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And have we, is that how it reads on our agenda?
Yes.
It is.
Now, I think most of the discussion is centered on the re-zoning. And obviously, if the re-zoning's not approved, then there's no reason to annex.
Perfect. So if we've done it combined, then we do not need to do it twice and we can close it.
I did close it.
Right. And, and then, and then take action at the next meeting.
I think that's right.
Like, I keep, I keep hearing that we're holding it open, which is confusing me.
I'm sorry. So our intent would be at the meeting in August, we would still, we would open it up if there were public that wanted to make comments during.
I'm clear. Okay, thank you. I was confused.
That was confusing on my part.
No, not at all. Only.
Are we good, Rich?
Yes.
Okay. Just a little bit of tech. Thank you. So next, we will move to our final new old business, which is the re-zoning for the property located off of Peach Orchard Road, south of Sweet Haven Lane.
The agenda item is for another conditional re-zoning with annexation. In this case, off Peach Orchard Road, the site is approximately a hundred seventy. The site is approximately 171 acres. Currently zoned countryside residential. And the proposal is to go conditional zoning residential low density to develop the site for 155 lots, single family residential subdivision. Neighborhood meeting was held in October and the planning and zoning board did recommend approval subject to staff recommended conditions at their May meeting. And staff recommendation is to approve with conditions rezoning of the property off Peach Orchard Road for 155 lot, single family subdivision, subject to town council annexation proof. To orient everyone, this site actually is split by Peach Orchard Road. So you have a northern section, you have a southern section. And there, and I'll point out that the development on either side, but it, it is on both sides of Peach Orchard Road. And the, this little bit orientation. This subdivision is coincidentally Hawthorne, is it not? Okay. My memory is working. That's good. All right. Survey again, there's a division between the property. You can see Peach Orchard. So this is, this is a summary slide. There's a, there's 84 lots to the south, 71 to the north. Lot sizes are minimum 75 feet wide. There are 77 that are at least 75, there are 78, there are at least 80. The gross density or overall density for the site is 0.91 dwelling units. A land use plan calls for less than one for the conservation subdivision, which is the proposed layout here. The UDO RL rezoning will allow for one to two dwelling. So I don't want to confuse the issue, but there are two options for developing this site. One is for conventional and one is for conservation. The difference between the two is lot size. If you go conservation, minimum lot size is 14,500. If you go conventional, it's 25,000 square foot lot size. So essentially what the developer is doing is following the conservation subdivision requirements, but increasing the size of the lot. And based on our calculation, this was a rough calculation. The lots to the, to the north, just under 20,000 square foot average. Lots to the south, about 17,000. So lots are smaller to the south, larger to the north. If you average both, you're right about 18.5, which is somewhat midpoint between the 14.5 and the 25 between conventional and conservation. Or if you want to look at it another way, the size of the average size of these lots is about 25% larger than you would get with a purely conservation subdivision, which is 14.5. I just wanted to hopefully make that a little bit clearer. So two things to point out on this slide. One, of course, is Peach Orchard Road. The second is there's a proposed open space playing field. You see those here? There'll be some parking and then some parking over here as well. I think it's about 7.79 acres, if I recall correctly, right about that. The ordinance requires public open space depending on the size of the subdivision and the number of lots. This is to zoom in on the northern portion. Again, this is the smaller section, 71 lots, Peach Orchard Road to the south. And you can see the open space in here. To the south, you have a few more lots, a little bit smaller average overall. You do have a connection. Let me just go back up here. You have a proposed connection, future connection to what would be the east. And then to the southeast, when these properties develop. This is a one location access point. There was an earlier drive proposed right here, or right here, I should say, was removed from the, the plan. To the south, there is a access, obviously off Peach Orchard. And there's a hard connection to Sweet Haven to the south. So you've got a connectivity here, the existing subdivision. And then of course, on Peach Orchard Road. Jump back real quick, just a quick illustration of some of the typical potential elevations. I'm sure the developer will talk about that a little bit more. There was a TIA that was done for the property. And the TIA did recommend several offsite improvements. Peach Orchard Road, Robinson Church Road recommended a westbound right turn lane with 100 feet of storage. And then an eastbound left turn lane along Robinson Church with a 100 feet of storage. We can go back and you can see that in a little bit more detail. The Peach Orchard Road access two is the central access point for both developments. And that would have, you heard the term internal protected stem. In this case, it would be 100 feet. So that would be a hard median. So you cannot penetrate that, that stem. One ingress, one egress in either direction on either side. Then Peach Orchard Road, Lower Rocky River Road, Rocky River Church Road. It proposed westbound right turn lane along Lower Rocky River Road with 100 feet of storage and an eastbound left turn lane along Rocky River Church Road with 100 feet of storage as well. The developer has proposed the addition of a left turn lane into either side of the development here and here. And we think that's a great idea. This is a blow up, a little zoom in on the plans for the fields. Some parking. Obviously, you get some open space here, field space in here. There's been some discussion with Park and Rec with the developer, not, not very detailed. But I think the likelihood is that field space is what's needed in town. So some sort of soccer field or open field to handle all those kids that Jim keeps inviting come and join our recreation program. In terms of the land use plan, this area is designated very low density residential, which is less than one unit per acre. This character is predominantly going to be rural with low density, single family homes. Density is between one and two units per acre. Again, this proposed development would be under one acre. And so from a consistency standpoint, it is consistent with the future land use recommendation for this area. And so adequate facilities, sewer, water availability, sanitation, public services available. TIA have already gone through that. There will be some children associated with this development. Total of 130 students, 60 elementary, 30 middle and 40 high school. And so that would give you a total number. And then sewer allocation, there is going to be just a little bit larger allocation for 155 lots than there would be for an age restricted development. You can see the numbers there. And the allocation is going to be bring us up to 57% on this. The, similar to last hearing, this is what we're requesting you hold a public hearing on the rezoning and annexation for this property. And again, recommendation is to adjourn the meeting until August 14th and make a final decision at that meeting. Or you certainly can defer a decision even beyond that. You're not bound by one meeting, any more than you're required to make a decision at one meeting. Jump back up. So there's a few more conditions with this proposal. Some of them are standard. I'll, I'll try to hone in on the ones that are, are not. Beginning with number four and five, those are traffic related. Number four is directly from the TIA recommendations for offsite improvements at Robinson Church and Peach Orchard, and then Peach Orchard, Peach Orchard and Lower Rocky River Road. Number five is the left turn lanes in both directions with appropriate storage along the development frontage. Applicant agree to mitigate any replacement of heritage trees if damaged or or need to be mitigated if they're damaged or construction. Ponds will be wet pond, standard coverage depth for those surrounded by a vinyl fence. And the mailbox clusters would have to meet ADA standards. Streets would be to the town of Harrisburg Engineering Design. And I believe we have a few more. Yes, we do. So as part of the approved recommendation conditions, applicant would agree to design and construct playing fields in the area designated as public open space. The final design and construction of those playing fields will be determined in coordination with Town Park and Rec with input from the Park and Rec Advisory Committee and also Public Works, obviously, in planning. And shall be depicted on the preliminary plat for this development. Applicant also would agree to provide a minimum eight foot landscape easement on either side of property for lots that share a rear property line. And finally, property rental will be restricted to no more than 10% of total units. And I'll just leave that up. If there's questions, glad to answer, or if they get really hard, Rich can answer them, or Rob, or Mallory.
Zach, where, what number do we sprinkle at?
Great question. So the sprinkler requirement is a fire code requirement. And so under the UDO, up to 30 units, one access points required. 30 to 60, you need two. Over 60, you need three. So in terms of, so fire and UDO are different. And my understanding is that the sprinkler option would allow for fire to have access. But we still have a requirement for our, our UDO, which is we need two or three, if you're over 60. So I think that's, you know, again, fire can allow for that. They have reviewed this and I think that they're satisfied with the access. And it may be that they're looking at the sprinkler option though to to be comfortable with.
With one entrance? We have like 70 with one entrance?
So to the north, that's 7184 to the south.
That's, that's a lot of folks to get out if something happens. One entrance. And I don't know how that water play. How does that water play? Does it at all in?
Yeah.
Yeah, right. Go up, people in right there.
Yeah.
So could those folks like be an island on a bad day?
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know the depths of that.
An island before, and I know what it feels like.
The depth of that, you know, again, at one point, there was an access here. There's future connectivity here and here. Like fire would, would obviously have to be satisfied with the arrangement. And, and I do think there was some discussion. And maybe the applicant who's here tonight can address the sprinkler option. But I think there was some discussion about that.
Well, you know, so when I, my first question out of the chute was sprinkler. But as you dig deeper, it's like, okay, is the bridge going to be a floating bridge just in case the water gets high? We've still got a way out. But I think that's the bigger question is when we start looking at this, are we trapping these folks down there in a way that whether we have future connectivity, that doesn't solve the problem until that piece of parcel is sold and developed? It seems like it's a problem waiting to happen, to be honest. Wouldn't you say the smallest lot size was?
14.5 would be the minimum. So the smallest lot that you would see in this development would be 14.5. But there are a number that are larger than, than that.
So, you know, for all those stuff, people out there to want to know. One acre of what?
0.91.
No, that's if you divided out all of the whole. I'm, I'm riding down that lower street and I come across four houses. It's going to be an acre, four houses are basically.
43,560 is one acre.
Be three houses.
Three.
Three.
Would be 15, 14, five times.
To Councilman Smith's point, though, I, I think, you, you know, even if the bridge situation is solved, I think what I heard Zach say was we have a, you know, you can solve it with sprinklers and you can get fire code satisfied. And you may be able to solve that bridge situation if it's high enough and it gets outside that 100 or 500 year. But we still only have one access. If you have an accident, you know, any type of accident on that road, anything that closes it down. That's what our UDO requirement takes care of. So I, I would have that concern that you have 71 lots and one access. And I'm not sure that we can say it's consistent with the UDO if we only have one access.
And when we, with Raging Ridge Bridge was going in, we asked if it would be raised because we knew of the flooding and NCDOT said no. I mean, and then like, and we know it'll probably flood. So I hate for us to put in something that could be that barrier, prevent it. I mean, everything I get is going that way. Eventually, they're going to suffer the issues that those of us on Stollings have been suffering for years.
Yeah. And, and even if we solve that, I, I think we still have a problem with a single entrance. If you have a telephone wire go down, you know, storms come through, knock a tree down. Whatever it is, that's, that's the point of our UDO multi entrance requirement is it's not always just a house on fire. It's other access issues, emergency issues that could come up.
And that's why I said, you know, at, at first sprinkler, but then as you really start digging in, you're like, oh. There, there's more issues going on.
Yeah. And, and I mean, this, this is a unique subdivision. And, and again, the, the UDO requirement up to 30, you have one, 30 to 60, you have two. Over 60, you have three. You know, this, this is a split of subdivision, so presents some, some challenges on, on paper. You could give three access points here.
But we're looking at intent.
No, I understand. I understand. So, you know, this is, this is a unique situation. But yeah, I mean, the code would, would have to be met. And I think, you know, there's a couple of different ways to do that. Whether it's an emergency access, whether it's a, you know, temporary until such time as you have development on one of those other parcels, which would open up two other access points. And then you'd have, you know, three there. So.
So there's part, I guess you call it a part, playing fields, parking. I see Jim sitting over there. We can't, we can't offer services out here without restroom facility. So I guess it sits fallow like Holcomb Woods did until we put in a restroom. So I guess it sits fallow like Holcomb Woods did until we put in a restroom, which we're on the hook for then. I don't want to make that mistake. Well, I didn't make that mistake.
Yeah, that was.
Somebody else, but I don't want to do that again.
That was made.
Yeah, and there was some discussion among staff about that. You know, that if you, if you did, then absolutely, you have kids, you need some restrooms.
They have to have a restroom.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I think, you know, again, the, the applicants here and they can address, but, but I think they have been you know, fairly open about, tell us what you want for us to design and we'll design it. So.
So the, the green, the green space, and I know when they presented it to planning and site, and it's like, oh, you keep everybody here, you don't travel on the roads, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But I have to look at Jim and I have to look at all the council, I have to look at staff and say, just because we're offered a piece of property, it's to be a park that hasn't fit into our master plan for yet. And we need to, we need to guide that document and don't let developers guide us what we want with it. We need to let parks be decided by the professionals in our town. So I'm concerned. And also on the road improvements, it wasn't straightening out Peach Orchard. Like, it was still keeping Peach Orchard at the same angle that Robinson Church.
Right, there's no, there's no straightening with this one.
Are there any other questions for Zach? Zach has an applicant presenting this evening as well.
Yeah, we have a.
We'll do that before we go into public comments. Oh, there. Okay, my apologies. Got over excited with the fun. Good evening, Radam Mayor and Council members. My name is Sarah Beeson. I'm a real estate land consultant with Alexander Ricks on behalf of the develop, the developer this evening. And so along with me, we have Frank Karenfroth, he'll be engineering. We have Dan Robertson and Mike Shea of Empire Communities. Also with Shea Homes prior to that is the connection. And we also have Randy Goddard with D R G to address the traffic improvements and analysis that has been done. And so before we get into it, I'll let Dan come out and just give a brief introduction to Empire. You've already seen it in Camellia Gardens, or at least starting on that project, and we'll get into that as well.
Hi, Dan Robertson, eight thousand eight Corporate Center Drive, Charlotte, North Carolina. So Empire, we were formerly Shea purchased, I guess, a couple of years ago. But it's still all the same Shea leadership and quality that, that you typically see in a Shea home. I believe we're the, the highest average sales price production builder in the Charlotte area. So we, we build primarily step up housing. Kind of the, the lowest level housing that we build would be the first time step up. So for people who have bought their first house, they're maybe had a few raises, maybe had a few kids. They're ready to step up into their next home. That's, that's kind of the, the lowest level homes that we build. But so Empire is based out of Canada. We have divisions in Texas, Georgia, North Carolina, and South Carolina. And yeah, once, once we become a part of a community, we look forward to spending a lot of time there and continuing to be a part of that community. So we've got Camellia Gardens going here in Harrisburg. We've done really well there so far and hope to continue working in Harrisburg.
So then the next project is how Zach has introduced it here off Peach Orchard. And so here's the two properties bisected by Peach Orchard. He then have the Hawthorne Community, he's referenced. You also have Peach Orchards here to the south. And then the recently other approves is the Illy Meadows right there. You have the Holcomb Woods over here, and you have the Grantham right around there. Just a little bit more context for the location. And here's just a close up again of the property site. And so between the two, as it's, again, the Peach Orchard between, it's a little over a hundred and seventy-one acres currently within Cabarrus County zoning. And so this is a dual request with annexation as well. That Cabarrus County zoning is for the residential rural countryside residential. We're requesting you go into residential low. Sorry, I know Zach has hit on a lot of these points, I don't want to be repetitive unnecessarily as the night draws on. And so it is very low residential, pursuant to land use plan. As he's noted, there is kind of a dual path that you can take within that, whether you take a conventional rezoning, which is up to one density per, per acre. Or if you go conservation, which allows the clustering of the homes and lots, the entirety of that intent is in order to preserve work common open space, natural areas, and environmentally sensitive areas. And that is the path that we are proposing for this project. And so there's a hundred and fifty-five proposed lots. Again, as Zach's kind of already referenced, you got eighty-four and seventy-one between the two different portions of the site. The minimum is fourteen thousand five hundred, a third of an acre. However, the average is over eighteen thousand, which is point four-two acres per lot is our average across the entirety of the site. There are only, as currently proposed and drafted, there's only five lots, I believe, that hit that minimum of fourteen thousand five hundred. If you look, especially on the heritage tree survey, it's mainly to preserve around some of the heritage trees and the common open space where those five smallest lots are. But otherwise, the rest of the lots are well above the aver, the minimum requirement. And I think the largest lot goes all the way up to forty-seven thousand square feet over an acre. You know, we, the site is not driven by the minimum requirement, fourteen thousand five hundred. This is not a third of an acre. We understand that is kind of the minimum desire to be seen. And even higher is what is kind of their, again, desire of the, of the council and the town. And so this does reflect that with larger lot sizes. Over fifty-one, almost fifty-two acres of the site is preserved to open space. And there is a seven point seven-nine acre public park that will be dedicated to the town. We'll get into a little bit more details on that, but that, that would be something if accepted by the town, would be completely dedicated and a kind dedication up to town for maintenance and ongoing ownership. Lots looking at percentage wise, again, a hundred and fifty-five lots, but that only accounts for less than thirty-eight percent of the property. The setbacks around each of those properties is in accordance with the U D O for the conservation subdivision. So we have twenty-five foot from the front. Ten from the side, which gives you twenty between each building at minimum. You have a twenty-five foot rear, and you also have the thirty-five foot building height minimum. I know one of the conversation points, not only this project, but other projects here at the town has been sidewalk encroachment. There is thirty feet between the twenty-five foot setback and the five foot planning strip between before you get to the sidewalk. We've also proposed a condition that is thirty feet guaranteed between the building envelope and that sidewalk to ensure that there is no encroachment to the extent possible. We've gone above and beyond that as well and offered at least thirty percent of the lots would be side loaded garages minimum. That would be again enforced through the H O A declaration or some other governing documents for the community in order to enforce that. So it's a little bit hard to see, but just showing some differences between the initial submittal back in September versus what the latest light plan back in May was for Planning Board. One of the specific comments, I know this goes back to the, to some of the discussion I was just being had about access points. There was another access point off of Peach Orchard. And its proximity to the bridge at McKee seemed to raise a lot of concerns. I believe among community members as well as members of staff and members of the council. And so one of the considerations was to take that out. If you're looking at the community as a whole, there were, there were three access points, one to the south of Peach Orchard, and then one on each side of the Peach Orchard right there. So from a community wide perspective, you had the three in addition to all of the stubs. And again, believing that that revision was in response to concerns about the proximity of the second entrance along McKee Bridge, and then coming along the curve, we understand there's also great concerns as you're coming down Peach Orchard to the bridge around the curve. And so it seemed, kind of addressed in the earlier, that instead of having two driveways off that one point, reducing it to one was a safer alternative. Then we, the traffic study as Zach has mentioned, thank you, whoever's zooming in. Access one was removed, so then the focus was on access two and providing those ingress and egress there. Then the offsite, all recommendations. And just to kind of show the location of those in relation to the property. So you have the first one here at the intersection of Peach Orchard and Robinson Church Road. And then the second one is down here just below the, the jurisdiction line at Lower Rocky River, Rocky River Church Road. And then I'm going to welcome Randy Goddard to come and just kind of address a little bit more of the traffic improvements that were suggested, as well as an alternative that we were suggesting in lieu of those.
So good evening, I'm Randy Goddard with Design Resource Group. We were asked by Empire to kind of assist them and take another look at the traffic study. So we've had discussions with the town. We've asked for kind of a reevaluation of those two offsite intersections based on what came out of the original traffic study. So I think we want to see what comes out of that, but what we thought would be a better alternative to those offsites would actually be the left turn lanes at the main access. To us, that's better use of the money, provides safe ingress and egress to the development. Those were actually not called out in the traffic study. So we really feel those would be better improvements in lieu of the other two offsite intersection improvements. So those are just the items I wanted to touch base on as it relates to access in the traffic study.
And so to elaborate on the in lieu, we had gone back to staff and asked them to go back to Kim Lee Horn and just look at the data and analytics really for those two offsites. Again, based on the concerns with Peach Orchard in particular, not having anything required on that item, it seemed to address that concern more specifically. I, I believe the other concern was the, the mitigation effect or the alleviating effect of the other two offsites was nominal. And so this, again, we thought would have an enhanced benefit of those compared to those. So I think we're waiting on feedback from Kim Lee Horn to whether they would agree with that revision. When you remove the, that northern access point near the bridge, the other benefit of that was just the public park area proposed went from about six point five-five acres, I believe, to seven point seven-nine. We understand that there has been a lot of questions about the amenities, what exactly is being proposed within that public park provision? Again, this is something required, at least the public open space component required under the U D O. So that is why that's being proposed. As far as specific details, again, based on conversations with staff and elsewhere, generally those don't come till later in the process as we get a little bit farther in design. But we have gone back and had conversations about, is it field, is it, what exactly is appropriate for this? And we just need more discussion on that. We have engaged another engineer, landscape engineer to really look and provoke, provide conceptuals for that. So we're still going through that process to get more design ideas and to continue that engagement with town staff to determine, is this appropriate, what's appropriate, where do you want it, and how can we do that? So that's all pending just further discussion with staff and getting that feedback. I know, my apologies. I know one of the concerns, and again, this was related to the bridge, or as you've kind of pointed out with the, the primary access point, it was just flood plains. We initially showed at least a hundred foot flood plains showing very minimal impact to any of the sites. We went back in and added the five hundred foot, which is a little bit different this, but that's kind of showing that second line right above. Oh, five hundred year, what did I say, five hundred foot, my apologies. And so gone back and added that line. It's pretty much the exact same lots as you can see, about three right there. And that, that's along the southern southwestern property line, near the conservation easement. And then again, up here, another conservation easement on those lots, one thirty-four and one thirty-five, I believe. And then up at one forty-nine, which is one of the larger lots as well, the hundred and the five hundred foot come in. So those lots are impacted, but the building envelopes would not be near those. They would be more forward and away. So we don't think there's really any significant or material impact from those. And again, I think that's five lots out of a hundred and fifty-five that were even marginally impacted. So just some of the specific conditions on this, above and beyond the standard conditions that Harrisburg staff and projects generally include. As discussed, we have the Timson residential units. This is something that would be governed and administered by the governing body or the governing documents for that community homeowners association. We also have the setbacks to ensure sidewalk encroachments, as previously mentioned, thirty feet. And then in addition to that, the thirty percent minimum for side load garages. I think one of our only differences we've had throughout as well is the staff comment just says nationary products. We've given a little bit more robust list of exactly what else or what could be included. Again, acknowledging that vinyl siding is not a primary material in any way, shape, or form. And it's just used for some accessory features. The primary goal there is allowing also engineered wood products into the product options. Then here's, again, just kind of outlining the traffic improvement, just differences of what we had initially. Now it would be again, and this is all subject to N C D O T approval. Peach Orchard is an N C D O T road. We can't do anything without N C D O T approval. So that's the caveat that stands out on all of this. Northbound and southbound left turn lanes and those storage as shown. One of the comments back from Planning Board was focusing again on advanced warning signage for the curves. There are pre-existing signs from both side directions, you know, sharp curve, twenty-five miles an hour is the recommended. We can maybe some of the signage that's been spray painted all over, that can be, that can be helped to, to, to note what's happening. I know the, one of the forty-five mile an hour signs has been spray painted, so it just says five. So again, anything that we would do to that if above what's already there is still subject to N C D O T approval. And another comment was, you know, especially as this is a community that crosses both sides of the roads, how, how are we addressing pedestrian, pedestrian connectivity across, especially if it's across that public park? They're coming across to the amenity center that's primarily, at least right now, conceptually on that northern side. And so again, subject to working with N C D O T and figuring out an appropriate crosswalk if, in their standards, especially with those two, if we do the two left, opposing left turn lanes, working that out would be another thing we'd be willing to admit to, subject to N C D O T approval. And then the public park just acknowledging that soccer fields or some similar field game area. Again, as y'all had to work on earlier, we would imagine this would all be really hammered out in the development agreement that would address the public improvements. So another thing we, we wanted to point out, I know we've been at one fifty-five weaving Empire since submitting in September. But this property and this project isn't new to Harrisburg. It's come in before, initially at two hundred and twelve lots. And then through staff discussion, other discussion, they went down to a hundred and eighty lots. And then the final discussion with that prior developer was one fifty-five lots as well. And that's where we've picked it up and come in and made some of the revisions we've talked about tonight. And really feel that the project not only meets, but exceeds many of the requirements and desires and the goals. And hopefully we can have a project that focuses on public park, the natural open areas, and still has a very reasonable density that's less than many of the communities surrounding it. And provides larger lots and quality products, you know, to attract people to the town of Harrisburg that you've designed, you've created. Now you've wanted to make so welcoming and attractive. So just to summarize some of the highlights, this is very low density, point nine-one. We could have gone up to two acres, technically, I mean, two units per acre based on the conservation. So we believe we're well below that desired goal. Again, the minimum lot size is a third. Right now, we're only showing five of the hundred and fifty-five lots. Meaning, you know, meaning that bare, bare minimum, most are over eighteen thousand, and that's point four-two acres. Again, with some up to an acre. Less than thirty-eight percent of the property is even developed home sites. Over thirty percent of the property is preserved for open space. And I think it's sheet four shows the heritage tree study. There's a hundred and eleven heritage trees of those. Right now, it's only anticipated that seven of those trees will need to be removed, always subject to final grading, design, and construction. But all of that would be done. Always subject to final grading, design and construction, but all of that would be done in compliance with the hunters, with the Harrisburg U D O. And then the 7.7 acres dedicated to a public park. The only other item, I can show it here. We do have the buffer all the way around the property. 25 feet along the narrower portion here, minimum, and then it widens to 50 feet down and around. Let me just scooch down a little bit. And then it's still 25 down around here, but in addition to that buffer, there's common open space. If we zoomed in, you could see it. There's a minimum of 25 common open space right there as well. So the effective total of that buffer is 50. And then around here at the narrowest, it's 25 buffer plus 15 common open space. So there's again, a minimum of 40 between the pre-existing lots to the east and the actual lot along that line. And then we had an updated conceptual rendering to show some of the side load options. Since we are making that commitment and want to show that initially, we only had some of the front load conceptual. So here are some of our side load. It is a mix of one story, two story and one and a half story. No fixed quota on that. Again, it's, it's subject to market clientele and yeah, the purchaser's desired product goal. It also shows a mixture of the products. This is a conceptual based on Camellia Gardens amenity center, which would be a similar product. Anticipated for this. I think the only other question we generally get is about timing. Our expectation between permitting and building build out six to seven years for full completion at this time. So if it were approved, you know, in August, 2023, we're looking at August 2029, 2030 before full build out of the project. So I know when the sewer capacity or allocation numbers look like a big jump, that's going to be phased out again as well. And done on an as needed basis, which I believe also just aligns with the policy in general for how you want to allocate that, allocate those. And that is.
Yeah, I just wanted to touch on the timing again. So we would like, assuming everything gets approved, we would likely begin development in 2025. We would have our first phase on the ground by 2026, 10 or so months to build a house. Puts us in 2027 before the first people actually start moving in here. And then we're probably four to six years on completely building out this, this property. So, you know, we're 2031, 2032 before this is actually fully built out. So you know, this long timeline on this one.
Thank you.
I would, I would like to address Councilman Smith's question earlier. Chance to just verify everything. So the, the U D O allows for only one access point. For up to 60 lots, if you have sprinklers, but only 60 would be the max number of units. So in other words, over 30, if you know, up to, you have up to 60, you could have one, you can get up to 60 with sprinklering the lots.
So these would be sprinkled?
Well, the, the, the max would be 60. So to the north side, instead of 71, it would be 60. You could have one access point and sprinkler.
So we're over our quantity then?
You're, you're over on the northern side. The southern side, you may have the opportunity for another access point, which would get you your three.
With, with all due respect, how did we get here? If we're over our quantity and I don't, I'm not. I don't want to sound negative, but I'm confused why we're at this point if they're over the quantity where they should be. I would think this should, I mean, I understand the developer has their choice to continue to move forward. I'm guessing that's probably what's happening. But if we're already out of bounds on that. I don't know why we would be looking at it tonight.
I think the design could be altered. I think there was some.
Or the 12th hour, there should be an.
Well, I, I, I think the, the interpretation of the ordinance with 60 over that to, you know, beyond 60 for three. Connectivity. So there, there were some areas that were a little bit gray in this, but we'd have to, I think, fine tune it to make sure that we were satisfied. But, but that's so with one access up to 60 is what you can get. If you have three, you can get over. Well, theoretically you could do 60 and have that approvable. And likewise at the southern. But, but at the southern and you've got to 60, you've got two exit points, two workable access points.
So we've advertised, we've got to have a public hearing for it, but I think there's some general concern that there's a lot of things to be determined. And so that's a concern that I have without seeing everything that's on the table.
Yeah, I mean, so. We're having the public, we're having the public hearing tonight and then council. Yes, ma'am. And council will take action at the next meeting.
I would like to be honest. I mean, I would like to hear from the public, but.
We gotta do that first. We'll do that first. Thank you, Zach. We will open the public hearing. We'll go to those in council chambers first. We did have one gentleman that signed up. Steve Rich, if you are still here and want to state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, my name's Steve Rich, 7900 Willby Home Drive, Charlotte. Through a petition to partition, I'm one of two commissioners for this property. I was appointed and then approved by the Superior Court of Caris County to sell it. To do this, the, my co-commissioner and I put out information to 20 single family developers. About 10 responded and then going through a series of, well, when you give you some of the reasons why empire was selected was the reputation, the quality of their homes. The, the way they, you know, this was important to us, how you're going to work with planning department and the town on the project. As well as the zoning that's recommended and the density. Going through all this, they were selected and, and then also stood out to us. The, the way they wanted to handle the conservation easement going through there, looking at it as an amenity. And, and then also not forcing the, the density. Based on, you know, everything we've seen. I know there's some questions here with this a lot size. As one of the two commissioners, I couldn't be happier with what empire's done, how they've handled things and staff. You know, what I've heard back from them. And, and you know, I still look at what they've done very happy and just stand here and support what they wanted to do.
Thank you, Mr. Rich. Is there anyone else in council chambers that would like to address? So just state your name and address for the record, please. Thank you.
Hi, I'm David Benson. I live at 10548 Sweet Haven Lane in the Hawthorne Development, the HOA. So this is going to be in my backyard, basically. And the, I don't know which is a, here we go, don't blind anybody. All right. So we got a county right of way that comes where the gray is right down here. And it gets mowed and there's a sewer treatment, sewer line along that area. There's two sewer lines, a newer one. I don't know what the date of it is, but there's an old one even closer to the creek. McGee Creek is polluted. There is no aquatic life in that creek. We got deer that cross it. We got feral cats that cross it on trees that have been dropped across the creek. But you will find no frogs, no minnows, no fish, no, not even any turtles. So we're going to put a park with a polluted body of water. And you're going to have children playing in this water. And what kind of communicable diseases are we going to find? So I think we need to do a water analysis on McGee Creek. And find out if that's going to meet our sanitary codes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benson. Is there anyone else in council? Yes, sir. Please come and state your name and address for the record.
Again, my name's Mike Wallace, 11460 Peach Orchard Road. I don't have any fancy graphs or maps to show you, but I'm very familiar with this property. I've lived beside it for 50 years. To answer your question, yes, these people on the north side, if there's a problem, they're going to be stuck. It's bound by McGee's Creek on one side, woods on the other. If that creek floods, power lines down or something, you know, take them, excuse me, take them out with helicopter. And nobody's mentioned this is bordered by a natural gas line, which may be other dangers to those people at the, be the east side and north side. There's a natural gas line there. This entrance, they got here, I encourage you before you make a decision right there and look at this entrance. The two plans they showed, neither one of them were coming south on Peach Orchard Road. It's a very sharp curve, steep peel and continues into a curve. You're not going to be able to see to come in or out there. And we just sit here for an hour tonight and listen to the fire department talk by their understaffed. We're going to throw another 155 houses in to take care of it. I mean, to me, that's disrespectful to our fire department. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Is there anyone else? Yes, sir. Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Randy Hord, 11495 Peach Orchard Road. We've already been up here for the last 15 years to developments Hawthorne and Peach Orchard Estates on Peach Orchard. And the intersection in both sides, and they've addressed that tonight, but they still haven't fixed the problem at either one of those intersections. At Robson Church in Peach Orchard Road and Lower Rocky River. Both those other developments were approved. I think if you look back at the minutes at Hawthorne, that intersection there, at both ends, the developer was supposed to alter those intersections and they only did one intersection. All they did is turn it, turn in lane. Both intersections in the last 20 years, there's been fatal accidents. We really need to look at both those intersections before they move on and put more people on the street. They're really dangerous. I mean, you guys drive out there, you don't know where they're at. So that's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hord. I think we had one more to state your name and address for the record again, sir.
Billy, 7238 Sandown Court, which one's the pointer? So I just wanted to point out the landscape eye candy. None of it's a condition. It's been offered up. So along this east side here, there is the gas easement at the last rest, but so that buffer is kind of pie in the sky. Cause it's out of their control. Gas company wants to do anything to it, they can. Along Peach Orchard, it's not, again, it's not a condition, but they've got a note saying a 25 foot landscape berm type road frontage buffer. But they don't offer any grading. Natural topography is kind of level up here where they're proposing offering. This is all down slope. So conceivably they, you know, if you guys want to burn, you need to ask for it, make it a condition. But as the land lays in without grading, they probably won't give you a burn. So I just wanted to point those two things out. That's all I had.
Thank you, Mr. Lake. Anyone else in council chambers before we move to those on Zoom? If there's anyone joining us via Zoom that would like to speak during public comments on the annexation and rezoning. And I can't see it on my end, so. Amy Norris.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you just address for us, please?
11275 Peach Orchard Road. Thank you tonight for having this hearing. I do have concerns about this public park. I did ask this at the last rezoning meeting, but I see it still hasn't been addressed. They have listed it from what I understand is pending information. My concern is what kind of security is this going to be for a public park? Are we, are they going to install fences or is there going to be security? Will this be open for 24 hours? And again, who pays for the cost of this? Is this going to be taxpayers? You know, there is upkeep within this public space that hasn't been addressed. And also there is the question of who will be monitoring? Who comes and goes as someone who would maybe purchase a developmental home? I don't know how this is a selling point to say that amongst your neighbors, you're going to have some strangers in your vicinity. That just seems kind of odd to me. And a secondary concern is with so many developments coming onto our road. Like Mr. Randy Hord mentioned, we already have Peach Orchard Estates. We have Bradfield. We have Hawthorne. We have another street, but we're still designated as 45 miles an hour. Is there an option that later we can go to 35? We already have people passing each other, speeding through our straight lanes. Once you get past this curve as the map dictates. So I wonder, is that going to be addressed as well?
Thank you, Ms. Norris. I believe we have Laura Kariker that would like to speak. Laura, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
I can. Thank you. Just state your address real quick for us.
Okay. 9058 Hickory Ridge Road, Harrisburg. And I had a question regarding the presentation. It, I was pleased to hear the lady who gave the presentation say that they are saving 100 heritage trees. And my question is, because sometimes developers make promises and they can be disingenuous. Are those trees along the conservation easement that Gene Devine deeded to the state? Or are they 100 additional trees elsewhere on that parcel? There are often, there are often trees along creek bottom and he fought development. He was a personal friend. My husband grew up with him. And he fought development and he wanted to conserve that waterway. And so he made the conservation easement. And so there are a lot of trees on that farm and she's saying they're going to save 111 heritage trees. And I wonder if they are within that easement already. So that seems disingenuous that they're saving something that they shouldn't be able to cut down in the first place. So I would like an answer to that question, please.
Okay. Thank you, Laura. Is there anyone else joining us via Zoom that would like to speak? I don't see any more hands raised. Do you? Okay. We will conclude the public hearing. Can we get some clarification on this character's question about the trees? See if I have a quick answer for that. If not, we can make sure we get that, but.
Thank you, Ms. Kariker. Yes, it's a combination throughout and it is included in the rezoning plan on the fourth page. So some of the heritage trees are along that conservation easement, but a good, I don't have the number off the top of my head without counting. There's a significant portion of those that are within the developable area. And I mean, if I'm trying to estimate at least 50 or more, I think are outside of the conservation area. But we can, we can count those and get back to you to confirm that number.
Well, and a significant effort has been made to avoid the heritage trees. A lot of the shape that went into the design of this site plan is because of the location of heritage trees. A lot of the bins in the roads are to avoid heritage trees. There's, it's hard to see at this scale. But if you, if you could zoom in on some of the other areas, just zoom in on that south, that south part. You'll see that there's a sort of random gaps between lots. Those are largely because we're. Those are largely because we're preserving heritage trees. So there has certainly been a significant effort made in, in, in preserving open space and preserving heritage trees. We believe that's one of the large draws to this community. You know, this is gonna be a very natural feeling community with a lot of open space. And we, we want to preserve as many trees as we can.
The roads are also the shape there and same reason versus a little bit more grid-like straightforward pattern and more curvilinear to kind of navigate meander around those existing trees.
Okay, thank you very much.
I have motion to deny.
There's a motion on the floor to deny. And a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried. Alright, that concludes our whole, excuse me, our public hearings. We do not have any old business this evening. We do have, I believe, three items. Mallory finally gets to come up. Get out of here. Have a good night, y'all.
Last week, that time we were watching fireworks.
I know. And now nobody's hanging out to hear all your great stuff.
It's alright. Thirty-one thousand. I saw them from Florida. It was great. Twenty-one, somewhere in between there. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Um, I have a very, I have two quick presentations for you tonight. And I do want to say thank you for approving my seventeen consent agenda items and letting me lead those on consent. So tonight I'm gonna be speaking about the Shelby Woods Construction Contract. This is a project that has been going on for a couple of years off of Rocky River Road, Rocky River Crossing Road. Um, I've circled the project area there. Ah, sorry.
Up is down.
I know. Yeah, James was here. Well, once it comes back up, so this is a fourteen lot subdivision that's being constructed now between Morehead Road and Mapleview Drive. A lot of the lots are already completed. Oh, my gosh. It's like my first day. Everybody, it's the flag, the flag was lit. So the developer for this project requested a fee in lieu of one of the, one of the requirements of the, the project. They were going to be required to repave the portion of the street on their project side only, which I hated from the beginning, and then remove the speed bumps. The developer came to us and said, you know, I would rather just give you guys the money to do this. Estimate it, tack on contingency, do whatever you need to do. So we did just that. And we will self-perform that work under the fall paving project. This is a section of Rocky River Crossing that we have been waiting to pave until this development was done. They were making utility cuts in the area. So this, the timing of it is all perfect. We can do it under fall power bill. So we recommend approval of the attached fee in lieu contract, which has been prepared by the town attorney, and I will welcome any questions or comments.
It's this fall?
Yeah, we'll do it this fall.
So you're, you're good with the numbers?
Good with the numbers. We added a contingency, which would curious, we were gonna have to push it to next year, so.
Because if it was next year, we've been adding five percent inflation on everything.
The, so, and I'll just clarify that this is a estimate to pave their half the road. So we're, it gives us a better get pricing to just do the full thing and do it ourselves. And we can carry it all the way from the old project limits all the way to Moreheads. This is much better.
And take out the speed bump.
Take out the speed bumps, yes. They conflict with the driveways and they are not consistent with town standards.
There any other questions from Mallory or is there a motion on the floor to approve the contract as stated? Sir, second, thank you, Ron. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. The motion is carried. Alright, Mallory, you get to speak to us again. So we are talking about the consideration of approval of a contract for the town's water modeling and water sewer CIP update.
Well, Mayor, before Mallory hops under her second one, because we're going on the rocket docket there, there, there is a consistency statement for a denial. It has to say it's inconsistent with the plan, et cetera. And we got ahead of ourselves. I think Ron came over to ask, but I misled. So I'm backing, backing back up, checking with Rick, Rich, and making sure that we get that on the record.
We'll call you when we're ready.
Does Zach need to come back up here?
All smiles. I'm gonna go sit out.
Can you just, can you read the consistency statement for that denial?
I can.
Thank you.
Based on the staff report, the staff presentation and the presentation by the developer. This rezoning request is not consistent with the provisions of the Harrisburg Area Land Use Plan, at least in some, in some measure. And because that is unreasonable and not in the public interest.
Thank you. So there's a motion on the floor to approve the consistency statement. Ron has motioned. Is all in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
Becca?
Back to the regularly scheduled program.
This will be the best one of the night. Okay, so tonight I'm presenting on a contract for the town's water and sewer CIP update. We are seeking our twenty-year water sewer, water and sewer plan. The last time it was done was about six years ago, so we are ready for refresh. We're gonna ensure that we are meeting the constant changing needs of the town and our residents. So there's two parts to the CIP, obviously water and then sewer. So the, we're gonna do them a little bit differently this time based on some of our current needs, but our main emphasis on the water update is going to be to provide a revised schedule of our capital expenditures, update construction estimates, and just confirm that the CIP is consistent with our community's needs. We will be doing very detailed system assessments, including calibration of the water model. This will help us forecast future water needs and be able to respond to those needs with CIP projects that address those needs. An example would be an area where we forecast having low pressure in the future. We may install a booster station for that and the, that'll help guide us to that need. So the CIP study will evaluate population projections and demands for the projections and a separate study will be completed. I'll bring the contract to you this fall to evaluate alternate sources for drinking water within the town. We want to be able to use the information from the CIP study to kind of guide us on how we do that. So trying to line those up well together. And then the data that we use from that will allow, from the drinking water study will allow us to be more self-reliant on our water production. On the sewer CIP, again, we're gonna be evaluating planning and budgeting. We're gonna be digging really deep into feasibility of private system acquisitions. So in older, in non-annex neighborhoods where there's a sewer system existing and then pump station decommissioning. So historically, our CIP has been very heavy on pump station decommissionings. But what we've noticed is that it's not, it's not a break even anymore. The break even is thirty, forty, fifty years from doing those decommissionings where historically it could have been ten years or less. So we're moving away from that a little bit, but looking at what we need to do to still maintain the system. We're not doing detailed system analysis for the sewer system. We do those under our annual sewer maintenance budget. So this past year, we did a sewer evaluation of Harrisburg Park Neighborhood. So, and we do that kind of as needed throughout town. We don't feel a big need for that under this project. So the suggested motion is to approve the contract with Black and Beach for the town's water modeling and sewer CIP update. And I thought I put all this on there, but the contract is for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and will last about eighteen months, the project. We have worked with Black and Beach in the past and they're a really excellent engineering firm to work with, so we're really confident in their abilities to perform this for us.
And it sounds like some of this information that's gonna come out of this will go back to one of the line items that we saw for finding alternate.
Yes, so, so this will help guide that study. This is a separate study from that, but it will help guide where we kind of start with that study. They'll tie together. So you'll hear another contract from me on that one.
Are there any other questions from Mallory?
And the money for this comes out of the sewer water.
Yep, it's a, it's an amazing investment for us because we take that money and just put it back into the system and guide where we really need the money for the system.
Motion to approve.
It's motion on the floor to approve. There's a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you, Mallory. Last but not least.
A lot has happened since the last time I was.
We missed you. Did you fall asleep? You thought you'd done it a long time.
Alright, this should be a pretty good one for everyone in the room. This is land donation to the YMCA from Harrisburg Park. Yes. Alright, so for a quick background on this, in September twenty nineteen, we executed an installment financing agreement for the Harrisburg Park redevelopment project. And along with that agreement came a deed of trust and a security agreement over the park that we provided to the lender. The bank agreed at that time when we did the financing, because we knew that this would happen, to release the land from the loan whenever that project materialized. So that has happened finally. So in May of this year, we signed our operating agreement with the YMCA. And included in that was a donation of land valued at about seven hundred and thirty-six thousand. And the land transfer is required before the YMCA can begin construction. So this is an important step for us to accomplish here. Here is the map that is being submitted to the bank. For those of you who are not engineers and planners, here's a map that makes sense. So it is to the southwest of the amphitheater, as we all know, and we've outlined it in red there. So that's the approximately ten acres right there. And so the resolution that was attached to the agenda accomplishes the surplusing of the property. It officially donates it to the Rowan Cabarrus YMCA. And it permits me to request of Webster Bank, which is formerly Sterling National Bank, if you remember when we did the financing, to release the property from the deed of trust. And so our next steps, if approved tonight, would be to submit the signed resolution, the maps and the official request letter to the bank. And then our town attorney, Rich, would be able to record the release from the title and the deed of trust. And I would welcome any questions.
Thank you, Brian. Counsel, are there any questions for him this evening?
This is consistent with the last contract we talked about last month.
I'm sorry. Oh, oh, yes, yes. Yeah, with the operating agreement.
Yeah, has that all been signed?
It has been. Yes. Yeah, that's been fully executed.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor to approve. Is there a second? Second, thank you, Mike. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. The motion is carried.
Thank you.
Getting the fist pump spot there from Mr. Crosby. We made him wait this, a really long time for that. Um, action items?
Well, I'd like to bring up one. So on the development that we denied tonight, I was so glad to see that a couple of the people that live there, particularly David Benson. When they had the developer meetings, the very first one before the developer, before this, he spoke. He talked about the contaminated water. He talked about all this. At least somebody else mentioned it too. So before this piece of property comes to us again, can we have engineering or public works contact him and go out there and let's see if there is contamination so we can get that marked off because it's gonna come up again.
Yes.
Thank you.
What else did you have? Rob?
I didn't have any action items. It was all conversation tonight. So I may have missed a couple that we want to add on, but I didn't write any action items.
I, the only one I had written down was, I think, Councilman Dellinger had inquired about what referendum timeframes looked like in the event we would need to utilize that.
That's right. Somebody's paying attention. Yes, so I'll be, it's that time of year. So I'll be sending out, and I was distracted the last four days, so this slipped my agenda. But I'll be sending out the next few days, the review packets for my employment review, which will be due next month. So same form that you folks got last year. Same process, but we'll be sending it out here shortly. And if you have any questions on that, feel free to let me know. I miss anything on that, Councilman Smith?
Without going into a lot of detail, I think you might want to remind us what you for, for last year, I guess it was.
Yeah, so my, my contract started in February of twenty twenty-two. We had a review scheduled for six months after I had started and then annually thereafter. So if you remember last year, that kind of slipped and went into September. And we did my review in September, the same time we were doing the pay study. And my suggestion at that time was I would forego the six-month raise since it was syncing up with the pay study and implement the, the pay study at that time. So this will be my first review that I'm eligible for a performance-based increase.
And so will we go into close session to, will these, oh, will all our reviews be conglomerated together?
Yeah, the same, same thing we did last year. So we'll, we'll have individuals and one. Yeah, I mean, we did a matrix last time so that you can see each and every review, but also that you would have average scoring compiled onto one review.
So that would, we would have a close session in August. Yes.
Well, absolutely not. I mean, I will, I will take it if anybody's passing out. Yeah, no, that's, that's an, obviously.
I think that's it for action items. And we do not have a need for close session this evening.
We don't have anything on for this evening.
We getting an update on lawsuit for upon?
We don't have one yet, but hopefully we have one next, next month for you.
Perfect. With that, is there a motion to adjourn this evening? Oh, my gosh, really, that was the quietest. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried.